This conference will now be recorded.
I wonder if we're going to mute?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Good morning, good morning, everybody.
Go ahead.
Yes, okay, sorry, just some connectivity confirmation here. So, good morning, everybody. Commissioners, thank you so much for having us to speak about federal and state awards, and what that might mean for the county, also for the municipality of Taos. Just to introduce myself to everybody, my name is Patrick Schaefer. I'm the general counsel of the Department of Finance and Administration. I look forward to coming up and being with you in person next time to talk about all these issues that are facing our counties and our municipalities. So, always, you know, feel free to call and contact the Department of Finance and Administration for whatever we could possibly help you with. So, the invitation today was to speak generally around the federal and state awards that are coming to the county of Taos, as well as even to the municipality of Taos, and what that might mean, both for procurement and for other kinds of legal considerations, particularly the anti-donation clause. So, I would first like to thank again the commissioners, not only for having DFA here to speak to you, but also to Brent and some of the other commissioners, and Jeanette, and the people that I met with when I was up in Taos earlier, a couple of weeks ago. So, I just want to say a couple of broad things around the working with third parties, getting money from the state, getting money from the federal government, that might be important as the county plans its resources and plans its work on behalf of the constituents. The first thing that I always like to say is that the restriction in New Mexico that is covered by the anti-donation clause prohibits any state money or anything of value from the state, public money, going to a private entity, that could be a nonprofit, it could be a for-profit, it could be a private individual, without any consideration. And that's why it's termed the anti-donation clause, because there is a prohibition on the state giving anything away. And I really emphasize that, because, on the other hand, there's absolutely no prohibition for the county, or even the municipality of Taos, to enter into contracts with third-party providers to execute the purposes, the mission, the goals of the county of Taos, and likewise, also for the municipality of Taos. So, it's something that I wanted to remind all of us about the anti-donation clause, but also remind all of us that counties and municipalities have a lot of freedom to contract, and have a lot of freedom to contract with, like I said, private individuals, nonprofits, or for-profit corporations to achieve the goals and the purposes of the county. Some things that are happening right now, that I just want to discuss, is the influx of federal monies, as well as state monies. And two important things here is that firstly, federal money is generally not subject to the anti-donation clause. So, for example, if the county of Taos receives a grant from local fiscal recovery funds, or from Department of Transportation, or some other federal entity, that money is generally not covered by the anti-donation clause. So, that money could be given to a subsubordinate that is a private individual, for-profit, or nonprofit corporation. On the other hand, the second thing I'm going to mention, though, is that if the award or the grant is coming from state funds or general fund revenue, it still is subject to the anti-donation prohibition. But again, even if the money is subject to the anti-donation prohibition, the county or the municipality in New Mexico can still contract with a third party to achieve the purposes and the goal of the county, just as it would with a communications firm, or a nonprofit to help with food security, or other kinds of projects that it's working on. Finally, one of the last things I just wanted to mention briefly, is the consideration when a county or municipality wants to get rid of property, whether that's real property or movable property, trucks, equipment, anything, chairs, furniture. There are provisions in both the procurement code and the county's code in New Mexico law that governs those kinds of transactions. And I think both with respect to the contracts that I mentioned earlier, that a county or municipality can enter into, as well as with the disposition of property, the disposal of property, the principle really that's important here to remember is fair market value. So, if I'm the county of Taos, and we want to enter into a contract with a third party, we want to make sure that that contract is based on a fair market value, and that what we're giving that third party represents, you know, something that would be objectively reasonable. On the other hand, if a entity, a third-party nonprofit, for example, wanted to use county resources, a county building, a county truck, anything that the county or municipality owns, they would have to lease that, or rent that, or borrow it under market value terms. The county, for example, couldn't really, you know, lend its fleet of F-150s for 10 cents a month. So, there has to be also a consideration of fair market value there as well. And likewise, with the disposition of property, the county can't just give away property that doesn't meet a fair market value. So, I just wanted to mention those things. I mean, a lot of people think DFA is just, you know, raining on the parade of our activities, but I really want to mention how there's still a lot of flexibility and a lot of capacity for innovation, for innovating, attracting third-party nonprofits that do come with this really essential and important part for the county, but also reminding us of these two really simple and fundamental considerations of the anti-donation clause and the disposition of property that's subject to the procurement code and also the county. I don't want to belabor my time, I think the public has a lot of comments to get to, and there's a lot of business, the commissioners, that you have to get to as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond as best I can.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Caker, when there's an exchange between two government entities of a building or property, you guys require a formal appraisal, is that correct?
Well, those, if I understood you correctly, this was a little low, but if I understood you correctly, Taos County is pursuing an acquisition of real property, is that correct?
Yes, in the situation of like, we're getting something from the town of Taos. In order for them to complete this, they must have an appraisal, is that not correct?
Oh, I think broadly that that is true. You can write to me directly after the hearing today, or the session, and I can provide you with details, because it also kind of depends on where the property is, and some other, even financial threshold, the value of the property, that might implicate, you know, state or finance, or some other statute. So, I don't want to give you the wrong answer right now, but you can always, and this goes for everybody in the county, write to me directly, and I'll be responding right away.
Thank you.
Question. Thank you, Commissioner Ambrose, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, good to see you in Taos County. Couple of questions, you mentioned that the county would have to lease or rent property at a fair market value. So, for example, if there's a nonprofit institution, they would have to, if they wanted to have a presence there, like a small office, or be kind of in charge of activities, they have to lease or rent from the county at fair market value?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, I, it was a little muffled, but generally, maybe, I think I understood the basis of your question. So, let's say, for example, that I am the, I'm ABC Company, and Taos County has an amazing, you know, commercial kitchen that's owned and operated, or owned by the county, or Taos County has an amazing conference space. Each company, just like ABC Company, would be required to rent that at a reasonable, objective, fair market value, if that's correct. Now, one other thing here that is also very helpful, and can help in the creative delivery of services, and the creative contracting between a county and a municipality, and a private third party, is in-kind donations, or in-kind services, that are presented to the county, or to the municipality by that third party, in lieu of, you know, cash, for example. So, if I'm ABC nonprofit, and I'm working on strengthening nutrition and food security in the county of Taos, and I don't have a lot of money, maybe my services can be contributed to the county in exchange for the use of the F-150, or the commercial kitchen, or, you know, the conference space, for example. Those in-kind donations are completely acceptable, they just also have to be measured and accounted for at a fair market value.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you for that answer, that was nice. We appreciate it. One other question, Madam Chair. We have, just to kind of set the stage here, the county has the ag center which is used for multiple, and married, and related activities, and also have a series of school billings that used to be part of the school district since 2000, if I didn't know this correctly. They've been the county property, the school district, even over, trying to not have to be to the county, and they've run it in a number of different ways. Some by nonprofit community or youth associations, and some by quasi-governmental organizations, like the Warren Sanitation. Can you give us guidance on what the difference would be, what the difference DFA would maybe have, between working with a nonprofit, or working with a quasi-governmental agency that might be managing, whether it's community centers, are there differences that we need to be aware of?
Okay, so, again, there might be some details that, you know, would be really helpful. So, Commissioner, you can always write to me with the specifics, and we can provide guidance. It might depend on the status of the quasi-governmental entity. But it just generally, if there's a third, like, for example, just as the county of Taos could hire a communications firm for a logo, or for a strategic plan, or for a communications project, it could also hire a third party to manage and service, you know, buildings, whatever kind of assets or physical infrastructure the county has. That third party could be a nonprofit, and could be a for-profit entity. But in either case, the county then would be entering into a contractual relationship with that service provider. And so, then the service provider would be a vendor or contractor for the county, and that would occur via procurement, procurement of the materials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Mr. Schaefer, I appreciate you being here. I wanted to run a couple scenarios past you, and I'll go back a couple years when the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage area was using the Oriente Center outside of Espinola in Calde. And at that time, I was a board member, and told the fair market value of that beautiful building was $40,000 a year. But we moved out because we could not afford that. I don't think, at that time, we understood the in-kind services. So, I want to go back to when a nonprofit is doing services. How is it valued? This is the stickler here of hourly rates, the county sets an hourly rate, and then it's applied against the value of the services being done in the building, or, say, for instance, in a community center, the time spent cleaning the building, or opening and closing it for the public. How do you set that value?
Okay, sure, great, great question. And also, I just say this as a caveat, I am the attorney for Department of Finance and Administration. I'm very happy to work with your county attorney, but I want to just be careful not to provide any specific legal advice or guidance. But I can, you know, kind of generally answer that question by saying that, and it's a very good question. If I understood your question correctly, was how do we really value, or what are the standards of valuation for in-kind services or donations? I think firstly, that valuation would be determined on a parallel, or, you know, comparable, you know, transactions. So, if, you know, somebody is leasing, or renting a space, or something from the county, you could look to those rates. Then the other thing I would say, so you want to look first at, like, comparable market rates, kind of like in the real estate sector. What are leases going for? What are uses of a conference space going for, et cetera? The other thing that I think is important to remember is the accounting of the value or the donation, or the in-kind gift. And so, not a gift, but the donation in exchange for the use of the property. So, there's both a market evaluation, and then there's also an accounting valuation, because it's going to be that accounting valuation that's going to help the county understand what it is exactly the third party is providing in exchange for the use or the benefit of the county property. And also, it's going to help the auditors and the accountants be able to budget that and understand, you know, what is being contributed in exchange for the privilege to use that asset or that property.
So, if I may, Madam Chair, what I hear is, we're not giving any advice on hourly rates, or we just set a yearly rate based on services, but again, what I hear is, we have to see what's fair, hourly rate. We don't know, okay? We don't know what an hourly rate would be of, and close a community center to run a library. So, these are things that we're going to need some guidance somewhere, how we set these values, because obviously, and then you're looking at rural areas, and is it fair to do a fair market value on a rural area, as opposed to a building in town? So, I know we have a lot of hurdles to get over, but I think this is going to be a difficult process, because these nonprofits are not going to be able to pay for these buildings, and they're going to have to do in-kind services, and then what happens if the in-kind services don't match the value of the building? And so, I just think, I wish the state would change the anti-donation. They talked about it a lot, but I wonder, do you have any thoughts on how you determine rural rates versus in-town rates, the services?
Sure, again, just kind of touch on that idea, generally, I think it's a very important idea that you're raising. The anti-donation clause, I don't think is so strict, again, I'm just giving my general thoughts here, no legal advice, but the anti-donation clause, I don't think is so strict that it, you know, has really black or white filters as to what constitutes, you know, adequate consideration between a third-party nonprofit using a county asset under what value. I think that the general principle here, again, is fair market value, and as the commissioner said, it's really important to consider regional differences and regional economies throughout New Mexico. Donaño County is going to have probably different rates, or different fair market value for some of these things than Taos County. Taos municipality might have some different valuations that differ a little bit from what the county is charging for the use of an asset. But again, it's, you know, not that there's a bright line, or a black or white goal, it's just that the community, and the county, and the local government come up with a reasonable fair market approximation of what would be valued at to use an asset that the county uses.
Thank you. Wanted to clarify, does it become anti-donation if the county pays for all, we pay for insurances, for the use of the building, up to a certain point, or not limited to these reasons? I think that what we have is more and more of the older generation, and people who own a lot, and is looking to the center, if they can handle the use of the birthday party, baby showers, just events for meetings, for youth associations, or other, and/or other organizations. And I think that for the big things, we've challenged you over the years, and that is a question, Commissioner, is that these organizations, we have to fund the base, we have to insure the facilities, and the utilities under the base, because they have a particular funding or something like that. And I think that we should be, if the county is able to take all that stuff, and then those fees, or have creative market value, can be determined to a level, right? Because we have a lot of mobile wired income in Taos County, every district, and every district basically almost has a commission, so, we should have a, right?
Correct.
So, I think that we're very unique, in some fashion, but at the same time, we're very similar to a lot of other counties that have these existing community centers, and I'm having a hard time just trying to keep them up. And if we don't have bodies, and then we do, then we're going to compete, and we're going to end up as property to handle the value. So, I know our manager, Diego's here, if you guys can kind of tag team that responsibility.
Yes, Commissioner Diego, it was quite difficult to hear the entirety of your thoughts, but I did hear the beginning with respect to the county's budget or spending to maintain the assets or the buildings, is that correct?
Well, the insurances and utilities that are ongoing, that have passed, have passed on to the organizations using the facility. So, I think that we can clarify, is that going to be anti-donation or not?
Sure, so, the anti-donation clause really states that, I mean, imagine if Taos County were a business, not a government entity, let's just look at it as if it were a business. It basically says that Taos County business, company, cannot give away any of its value to a third party without receiving adequate in return. So, Taos County, as a governmental entity, or even as a business, will have buildings, assets, a physical plant, things that it has to spend on in order to maintain the government, maintaining the Taos County entity. In those cases, that spending is in exchange for the maintenance of those assets, of that property. So, Taos County spending to a third party, so that that third party can provide value to the Taos, to the county of Taos, is not a violation of the anti-donation clause. And a violation of the anti-donation clause would be, for example, if Taos County let, you know, the rancher use all of its F-150s without paying for it, or, you know, paying such a small amount that it really stretches the limit of fair market value. The idea is that New Mexico Constitution wants the public value to be preserved, and for the taxes, and the general fund revenue, and all other kind of revenue, to be not benefiting any one person or the other, without receiving something in exchange.
No, he's just learning.
Just clarification. Just want a clarification, Mr. Schaefer, I know you've touched on it, but I just want to make sure the commission is clear, and the members of the public that are clear as well, that if Taos County receives money for a community center, the management or lease agreement needs to be in place, with the managing agency, be it a nonprofit or nonprofit, there needs to be a written agreement between the two bodies in order for capital to be received by Taos County.
Okay, I heard most of that. Brent, thank you for the question. I think, first of all, all of this has to be done contractually. So, I would recommend, again, just general principles, not being the lawyer or the representative for Taos County, but I always recommend that everything is done under contractual that everything is done on a contractual basis. Because, again, not violating the anti-donation clause would be demonstrating that there's a quid pro quo, that the county is offering this to a third party and the third party is offering this to the county of Taos and that there's a fair market exchange. I think that that is really the optimal and ideal way to go.
And so, and thank you, by the way, Patrick, for your presentation. My question is, or rather, it's more like a comment. So it's when we require RFPs, request for proposals, that means that everyone that is currently running a community center, for example, Tapa, Tapa, I think, is a perfect example of a community center that provides service throughout the day, whether it be a library, usable library, internet, you know, they just do a lot of good things. So they're going to have to now go out for a request for proposal to see if they're the one that, you know, when you go out for a request for proposal, anyone can jump in and say, hey, I want running. So that means that anyone running a community center is going to have to go through that process. Am I correct?
Well, perhaps. Again, not knowing the details and not being the lawyer for Taos County, I can answer generally. And I would say that what's interesting is that the procurement code is, I think of it as sort of the little brother or the little big brother of the anti-donation clause. Because as I was saying earlier, the anti-donation clause, based on historical, you know, impacts that were felt by the state of New Mexico and a lot of its tax money and public value was given away to certain individuals for their personal benefit. The whole purpose is to really make sure that our tax value, our public value is maintained and that nothing is really given away for free. So with the procurement code in particular, it really tries to establish that and stipulate all of that with respect to transactions that municipalities or counties and even the state itself enter into. And part of that is the quote-unquote procurement process, the RFP process. Is it going to be competitive bid? Is it going to be sealed bid? Is it going to be sole source? Is it going to be an emergency procurement, et cetera? Those are kind of the categories that are laid out. I don't want to speculate about, you know, what certain details or facts or underlie your question, but it would be important to look through the procurement code and see what options the procurement code offers for working with any entity that wants to do business with Taos County, whether that's a third-party nonprofit, whether that's a for-profit entity. The other thing I mentioned when I was in Taos the other day is that the procurement code even provides some opportunities to avoid the procurement code, particularly with respect to local agricultural producers and state businesses that try to alleviate, you know, poverty and other income disparities. So look through the procurement code because there are, you know, those typical structures, competitive and sealed bids, the RFP process, sole source, emergency. But then there's also some flexibility that the state legislature has included into the procurement code to both benefit New Mexico businesses and New Mexico producers and also New Mexico government as well. But I would say that it would be important with respect to your question that the procurement officials and the financial executives of the county of Taos look at what kind of procurement they're seeking and which options to pursue.
Thank you.
Mr. Shae, I just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you so much for your presentation. I am your county attorney and I really appreciate your attention to balance your position in mind. It is really nice to have you as an asset that we can call on in the State Department of Finance for assistance in these issues because you ultimately are reviewing authority on financial matters. And so it's really nice to have you cooperate. So thank you for being here today. And you unfortunately, I don't know your name, so I just want to speak out things.
I have just a couple more questions regarding these contracts. DFA will review them for legality, is that correct?
Well, no. You know, DFA is the oversight agency for public finances and transactions in general. But DFA doesn't, you know, routinely scrutinize or approve local government business and local government contracting. These are just, you know, general principles that we are committed to uphold as local government units, local government bodies, and state government. But the Department of Finance Administration or my office, do we go through the minutia of, you know, what you might enter into with a third-party provider? Now, okay, with that being said, we might enter into a certain relationship with the county of Taos if we're managing a grant agreement or an award, either from the federal government or from the state government. And I think that, by the way, thank you for having me. I really want to be up there in person and, you know, listen to you all without this computer intermediation. But something that I wanted to mention here is that DFA is working with Taos County both on the Taos County corridor project that came from the state fiscal recovery fund appropriations in the legislative session from earlier this year and also on a food security grant. So we will have close and, I think, ongoing engagement with you and support for your efforts. And I see that as only positive. But with respect to other general contracting that the county of Taos or the municipality of Taos or any other local government unit in the state gets involved in, DFA doesn't scrutinize those contracts. Just making the positive reminders of these things like the anti-donation clause and procurement.
And thank you. And if I may, the room rentals, if an Aseca or agricultural entity or providing food for the needy, do you see the need for the Asecas to be charged a room rate? The food banks to be charged a room rate? Or is there a way it could be included in the services agreements? Can you comment on that?
Sure. Again, generally speaking, the first point that you raised around an Aseca association, depending on its status, if it is a governmental status or if it's sufficiently governmental, then it wouldn't, I think, be an immediate violation of the anti-donation clause for the county of Taos to provide another governmental entity with the use of its space or something like that. So for example, if county of Taos invited DFA to do a presentation or something in chambers or somewhere else, that would be government-to-government transaction. So I think the question there, and again, I can help and follow up and work with the county attorney to determine, you know, what the status of that entity would be. If it's a nonprofit, nutrition and food security issues, then there would have to be a fair market value exchange. You couldn't give to a nonprofit as worthy as its purposes and efforts are a discount that you wouldn't give to ABC Company because that would be kind of an unfair, you know, benefit to that third party. But again, I just want to say a couple of things here real quick is that that third-party nonprofit and the county can think very creatively about what that third-party nonprofit can provide and what the county of Taos needs and find a meeting where what they're providing is of a fair market value for the county. So the thing that I really want to emphasize here as well as I've tried to emphasize in all of my comments today is that let us not be blinded by the anti-donation clause and the procurement code. Those are limitations, but I see them more as a floor and not as a ceiling. And what I mean by that is that they are limitations, but I just encourage us to think creatively about how we can enter into exchanges and contracts with third-party providers in order to accomplish the really important community outreach that the county provides and may not be able to do it itself. The county really often has to hire or contract with third parties to achieve the purposes of the government. So, you know, like the Commissioner said earlier, there's going to be variations in the state of New Mexico as to what constitutes fair market value. That's going to be different for Taos. And it's also, I think, important to think about what the source of value that a third party could provide that the county needs. So I just want to say that, that let us not be sort of overwhelmed by anti-donation and procurement and really think creatively about how the two parties, county and the private sector, can work together to accomplish goals of the government and the community.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say, Patrick, thank you for your presentation, but I really liked what you had to say at the very end about creativity. We can certainly do that, but, you know, as I think about these community centers and what they provide, you know, I think in many cases they're volunteers and they really are working for the community. So I think we can create a different approach to this. So thank you for that.
Hope to see you in town in person. Okay, let's move on to public hearing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Steve Morris is a public hearing board with discussion consideration action regarding proposed ordinance 2022-3, Taos County signed regulations repelling and replacing ordinance 1996-2, and adopting amended Taos County side ordinance. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting. At this time, it is 9:37 for record. And Rachel, from the insurance fund and the director role. I'll start.
I respectfully from according to date seeking the approval of the proposed ordinance 2022-3, Taos County signed regulations, which will refill and replace ordinance 1996-2. The proposed changes are referenced in red within the traction to the documents and choosing appropriate packets. And the main proposed changes are to the temporary science which were previously discussed as well as the changes made to the language in Article 2, Section 2-5 to 2-10, which is our proposal to provide clear language on the procedures regarding variances as well as the process for appeals, which is not very clear in the previous regulations. At the last meeting, when this item was discussed, I believe there was also concern regarding the off-term civil rights signs. And the adjustment language regarding the off-term civil rights has been revised and is now being moved to Section 1-4, exemptions, item number 15. I would also like to add that in the red line and the pink copy, there is a discrepancy between the two of them. And so in Section 2-8, number 4 and number 5, the words multi-tenant sentence in those two items should be deleted and replaced with the words joint identification signs. Also, in Section 2-10, the words quote and entered a statement of appearance at the public hearing, as the various requests should be deleted. This section should be any party agreed by the decision of the Taos County Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission may or may not be decided by following the steps procedures that are outlined in the most recently adopted Taos County regulations.
Mr. O'Neal, if I can clarify, we didn't get that document in the file, we didn't get the two value items. And so that makes sense to me. The public have to do that. Madam Chair, I'm opening brackets and agenda. And there are a couple of attachments on this agenda that are not included, the cover page, the agenda request, and this is one of the attachments.
That gets sent over to the commission. Let's make sure.
Madam Chair, I think what I did at first was a last version of this, some of the changes you were talking about. We're not, we're not so busy now, just a minute.
Madam Chair, I want to make sure our obligation in the meetings act would be that it wasn't available to view. I just want the staff to make sure that the draft ordinance was available to the public to view. It's another logistic problem that you don't have in front of you. We can tackle that if it's available to everyone else.
Can Rachel just kind of like in short form, the off-term billboard sign, you said it gave referred to different sections or the application processes. Is it allowed there to be billboards now throughout the county or in limited areas?
The previous regulation read was that only the existing off-terms appeal up and that's the same with regulations as it is now.
That's a change.
Very major changes. I think the only change was, one item was previously stated was that the warrant had to stay within the same property owner's name. And if it changed, it had to change to a family member. And if it didn't go to a family member, then the warrant had to be removed from the premises. That was straightened out.
Although there is no, there's no new construction or any of the works.
That is correct. No new, the works to be replaced. We are, again, the single-site billboard, we added a second site. So if it's a single site, it has to be the single-site billboard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you for that.
A little bit of clarification. So if I understood you correctly, as long as the document was, if the bill was public, if they were to call or come in, are you saying that sufficient?
When we, what happens when we publish and those are published during that because we say that a copy of the ordinance will be available for inspection. Now, we have a practice of including that on the agenda, with the agenda packet online. That didn't happen with. And I'm going to look, if we might take a pause, I think we could table this for a minute and figure out whether it was available to review. And secondly, I'm going to look at our open meetings as a motion to make sure that it doesn't say that we will publish ordinances. The state law just requires that it's available for someone to come in and view it if they're interested in it.
May I just confirm that it was about, like, a problem?
May I look for Kennedy Gray? One second. Hold the book. Ms. Vander.
Ms. Nilton.
Ms. Diegoz.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Bragg.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there's the motion that we had from Gray. Madam President, hold the book. Ms. Vander.
Yes.
Ms. Diegoz.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Bragg.
Yes.
Ms. Bragg. Yes. And just for the record, we are on public hearing. I would say a public hearing with discussion consideration action regarding proposed ordinance 2022-3, Taos County signed regulations repelling and replacing ordinance 1996-2, and adopting amended Taos County side ordinance. And Mr. O'Neal, would you please clarify what you would find in this work?
So the issue arose before the break that in the packets to the agenda that are published online... online, publication really isn't the right term. They're available online. It's not part of our publication process, our formal legal publication process. But we usually make the packets available, and it was not a topic of units in that online agenda packet. I confirm that our open meetings resolution does not require that. It simply requires that the agenda be posted 72 hours ahead of a public hearing, that they're being, and the public is notified where the items on the agenda are available.
Great, thank you for that clarification. So with that being said, let's proceed.
So again, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I apologize for that. Definitely not in the future. Really quickly, I'll just load up the red line and just going to try to identify everything that has changed. So we can, I guess, start on the second page. And so we've included the chair and planning director, which was not previously defined previously. And throughout this document, you can see that, well, I'll mention that when we get to it. So, planning director is now defined in the ordinance, second page, all of that was already included, items, the third page as well, the fourth page, on the new Section 1-54, you will see planning director added and co-concurrence officer, filling official, removed. And so throughout the document, planning director will replace co-concurrence officer, filling official. Okay? The next page was already all items that we spoke about. Yes, the?
Just remember to the public, this context of this is, this was already, the commission hearing, changes were asked for. Rachel and you have made those changes. But the purpose of the whole amendment of ordinance was to comply with federal constitutional law, because we were treating political signs with different regulations than all other temporary signs. The court told us in the Gilbert case that we cannot do that. So we are treating all temporary signs the same. That is the major change that's stayed in place. And Rachel's calling out the other specific things to clean it up.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thank you. So we, I'm not sure the page, the sentence, not remembering, but it would be, at the bottom, it would be Section 1-5, right, of inspection, and right before that, that is item number 15. So we've got the eighth page, item number 15, that would be the existing off-term billboard signs, the language that was added back in, and you'll see that that language is straightened out. On the fourth page, that whole entire page is straightened out, and that is where that language, number 15, came from, from page four. Some of the commission members had some questions on that. Moving on to the next page, what I did was I re-numbered Article 2 and Article 3, so that way it started with Section 2- and Section 3-. And then on the following page, starting on 2-6, the last line, various procedures outlined within this ordinance and the most recently adopted sections of the Tous County regulations shall be provided, has been added. 2-8, we are proposing to include items 1 through 6 on conditions for a variance. And that's where I indicated previously that item numbers 4 and item number 5, the words "multi-tenant center" should be straightened and "joint identification" should be included in that language. And then on the next page, 2-9 and 2-10 was also, both 2-9 have been revised, and we're asking to include a new section, 2-10, and it should be any party agreed by the decision of the Tous County Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission may appeal their decision by following the fill procedures that are outlined in the most recently adopted Tous County regulations. Straightening out the words "quote and enter a statement of appearance at the public hearing at the variance request." The last big point that they changed, or the last changes that we made was, towards the end of the document, the third, the last page, is Section 3-4, construction of signs. I just modified that rather than saying, set window, done for hours, change. So I just wanted to use the most recently adopted, very close in which the books, that a little does actually have to change in place. And finally, Section 3-9, Mr. Chigil, Article 3, also revised, Section 3-9, for any question in the, the language, item 15. I know I want to do that pretty quickly, and I separated questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Just what's the maximum allowed size of a sign? And I'm referring to, you know, since it's not a reference to campaign signs. Is it the 4x6? And then is that, they can be erected anywhere of providing there's permission from the property owner? I just want clarification in there.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I will thank you. Under Section 1-4 exemptions, item number 5, this is where we did the temporary signs. And so it is a maximum of six square feet. We take away the number of signs allowed, or the maximum square footage of all signs added up, and we're now just proposing six square feet and any number of signs, so long as they're not in the right-of-way or struck in chapter. So.
3x3.
2x3.
2x3. Six square feet is.
2x3.
2x3. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If you would like to open it again.
Not detecting the room.
Quite a bit of an agenda. And so just as a reminder, we never left the meeting, so we're still going to continue, but we're now at the point of public comment. And so let's open it up for public comment.
Is Rachel?
Oh, yeah, she is. She was. Rachel, you were, we're done, right? With your segment at this point? Anything you wanted to add?
Madam Commissioner, that is correct, not unless you or any of the commission members had any other questions.
That would happen after the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll do that after. Any additional, yeah, thank you. Yes, and Mr. O'Neal, please.
I'm a little concerned. I just want to confirm with Anissa, did, were we able to pick up and keep everyone on? Or, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Very good.
Because we're in a public hearing, and we don't want to lose someone who what was a party to this hearing.
Got it. Okay, so good to, to know we didn't lose anyone. And so once again, we're continuing with the public hearing. And I'll, for the record, I'm going to state it again, we are on the proposed ordinance 2022-3, Tous County Sign Regulations Repelling and Replacing Ordinance 1996-2, and adopting as amended Tous County Sign Ordinance. So we're at the public comment portion. So anyone wishing to speak from the public, please come on up if you're with us today in the chambers. Okay, and then I guess I'm going to go ahead and proceed and ask anyone online that would like to make a comment in regards to this proposed ordinance. Please unmute yourself, and you will have to state your name for the record and be sworn in. Anyone? Okay, Madam Chair, I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone? Okay. See none? Let's go ahead and then close the public meeting. And for the record, it is.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me. 10:39 AM. Okay, so would you like to, any final comments before we?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I would like to recommend the approval of ordinance 22-3 with the proposed changes I've mentioned, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, Commissioners, any further questions? I know we've already asked questions, but yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Section 3.1, area and height, and this is for the benefit of the Penasco Valley Historical Society that purchased the old school. They have at least 150 feet of frontage road. Can you give me, just explain what would be the allowable size of a sign they could put up?
So based on Section 3-1, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, item number 2, they would fall within that category for premises having at least 76 feet and not more than 150 feet of street frontage. The maximum height of the sign shall be 20 feet. Now, if it's a little bit more, then they would fall into the next category. Oh, that's actually repetitive, so.
The 20 feet.
It would be 20 feet again.
Five, then what would be the width?
So this is just in, speaking only to the height, the maximum height of the sign. So to determine what square footage they could have, you would want to refer to Section 3-6, and that's entitled freestanding signs. Or, excuse me.
That's minimum. Okay, so it could be more than 12 square feet?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
And there's actually a calculation that's done to determine what the maximum square footage would be.
Okay, thank you. And just in the future, I don't know, it'd be nice if these ordinance pages were numbered.
Yes, I apologize for that. I cut that out too.
If we have to put that in the motion, I think we should put request page numbers. Thank you.
And I would like some clarification. Mr. O'Neal, before we went offline again, or audio went offline, you mentioned the, you made a comment in regards to property owners allowing permission to put signs.
Correct.
So I have a scenario for you. And so, for example, the Telpa Community Center is owned by Tous County, but there is a portion in the front that, that is, I believe it's State Highway Department. So the signs, I mean, this is very typical during the political season, individuals will put their signs right on the first fence line. We, Tous County, it's not Tous County property, so we don't have any say in that regards, right? But then the state is the one, New Mexico DOT would then be the ones to say, hey, you can't do that.
You're correct. And then you may get a situation where either, if it's within Tous town limits, or if it's in the sheriff's jurisdiction, if there is an officer driving down the street, and there's a clear sight triangle blocked by a political sign, they will remove it. And theoretically, our zoning department, if they see a political sign or any temporary sign in the right-of-way that is interfering with clear sight, they will remove it, because anything in the right-of-way is simply illegal.
Okay.
So, but they won't, they're not going to make a practice of that during political season particularly, because it would be a, a ongoing effort to remove signs continuously. People continue to post signs. What we're concerned about is not on county property, and we want to keep the roads safe.
Got it.
And then for, for permission, always, if you just post a sign, there are some corners, you know, that are kind of political sign corners. Well, the owners of that land are usually okay with that. But if it, if it's on private property, the owner could remove those signs if you haven't gotten their permission.
Right. I understand. Thank you for that. Mr. Harmio.
Yes, Madam Chair, I want to further add, answer your question. If it's on the, on the chain link fence atop of it, it shouldn't be on the chain link fence. Those will need to come down, because that's Tous County's fence as well. Same thing with Royo Seco, I know signs go up there, so there could be no political signs on fences that are owned by Tous County.
Okay, so, because I was understanding, those two fences, because there's two fences at the Telpa Center, Community Center, right?
Right.
And, and so you're saying the two fences belong to the county?
Right.
Got it.
Capital Outlay paid for those fences.
And the tenant? Madam Chair, can I just follow up on something that you just said, Mr. Harmio, which is no political signs on those fences?
No signs at all, like the signs that are currently on there without, like Mr. O'Neal said, without the owner's permission. So we would have to give permission for those two signs that are on there right now.
And does that permission come from Ms. Romero, the Planning Department Director? Or does that permission come from, because, and I'm asking also just to understand, in a similar situation, the Arroyo Seco Community Center, it's like our bulletin board for the community, right? If there's an annual meeting of a mutual domestic or an Aseki Association, we've got big bed sheets that we put up there, because it works. It lets people know that that meeting's happening. So I would like to find a way where we can be within the, the rules and maybe have slightly smaller signs, but still be able to kind of use our community bulletin board.
I think confirming with Ms. Romero would be up to me or my designee, which would be the facilities director when that position is filled.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions? Okay, so any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 22, 2022-3, repealing and replacing ordinance 1996-2, adopting the amended Taos County sign ordinance.
I will second.
Okay, there's motion and a second to approve.
Discussion. Yes, they didn't include the changes.
So with changes as presented.
Second.
And that's fine.
Okay, with changes, okay. So there's been a motion and a second for approval with changes as, as presented. Okay, so call for the vote.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair Vahill?
Yes.
Madam Chair, did the audience hear that vote? There was a
Oh, was there another glitch?
The audience online, did they, did they hear that vote?
Yes, okay.
They did?
Thank you. Commissioner Gallegos?
Just, just to clarify.
Okay, so moving on. We are now going into public hearing, item B, a public hearing for the discussion, consideration, and action regarding matters on remand from the Court of Appeals decision in Sanchez versus Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, number A-1-CA-37995. And I believe Mr. Patrick Trujillo, attorney with the New Mexico Legal, and Rachel Romero will be presenting, so.
Yes, and I'll defer to Mr. Otio.
Oh, Mr. Otio will be doing this one. Okay, I just, thank you.
He is my brother, so. So, Madam Chair Commissioners, members of the public, we're here today because there has been a case that has been going on within the court system, first in our zoning system and then in the court system of this county, and then up at the Court of Appeals. And it's Eli Sanchez, the, the County of Taos, and Mr. Healy. And what it was is, you'll all recall, there was a helipad that was built by Mr. Healy on his property, and it was challenged by the Sanchezes. And it went up, went through court. What, the reason we're here is, the Court of Appeals remanded this case to the county to do a new hearing on this. Essentially, they said, you need to do a do-over. The reason they asked for a do-over were two. One was, our previous interpretation historically of the zoning code was, we didn't have to give notice to Asekiya associations unless there was an Asekiya madre that was being affected by the construction, that it ran through the land and was being affected. And that had been our longstanding interpretation of our code. What the court said is, no, the way state law works is, an Asekiya includes every part of that Asekiya. And so the court said, you didn't do it right. You would have had to put the Asekiya Association on notice of these proposed changes that may affect the Asekiya on Mr. Healy's land. So that's what we're going to do. The second part of that was, and in this particular case, the Asekiya Association wasn't given notice. The other unusual part of this that brought the case back was, there had originally been a change, and this is my recollection of the facts, the parties can clarify if they wish to, but this is coming from the court opinion. There had been a series of requests for approvals by Mr. Healy to his property. The, the County of Taos doesn't have jurisdiction to approve changes to Asekiyas. They're not buildings within our zoning ordinance or our planning ordinance or our building code. They are under the jurisdiction of the Asekiya Association. So there was a modification to the Asekiya done. And that was done without our notice or involvement. The county was not involved in that. Then the next thing that happened, there were two build, two permits reviewed for modifications to the Mr. Healy's property that occurred after that, in two separate cases. Then finally, the helipad. So there were three separate actions that took place, that came through Taos County after the Asekiya was modified. The court essentially said that when you do piecemeal development like that, it, and it can be interpreted that you're trying to avoid a greater level of review for the whole project together. I, I think it creates a lot of problems, but I understand why the court did what they did. They thought that this needed more public review if the ultimate goal was to have a helipad there. But what it does is it puts us in a difficult position and the parties, because we are now having to rehear cases that were decided years ago. And so we have to develop a process to do that. That's what the court ordered us to do. It makes it more complicated because we don't have jurisdiction over the Asekiya. So my recommendation on this, and again, we can hear from parties about the recommendation, but my recommendation is that we remand this case back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Make sure that they, and give them a specific direction to ensure that they have proper approval for the Asekiya modification before we do anything else. And then to determine the process for rehearing these matters that are so old, each of the separate, three separate cases that we had done previously. It's quite a, quite a difficult, it will be quite a difficult process, and for, particularly for Mr. Healy, because he didn't have any finality in this case, and that is not good for a property owner. But that's what the court told all of us to do. So with that, or unless you have any questions, I would say that the parties could weigh in on this hearing of whether they agree that a remand to P and Z is the right direction.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, though, if we hear testimony, we've tainted the actual, when the proper time after we, after the Planning and Zoning Commission kicks it, whether they approve or deny, if they approve, then it'll come to, and then there's an appeal. So I don't think we should hear testimony today from either party because that taints the, if it's appealed to us.
You're absolutely right. And the only thing that should happen today is argument, not testimony or evidence, about whether remand is appropriate.
And I believe the remand is the only thing we can do.
It would be very cumbersome for you to hear all these cases yourself. It's the P and Z that is the proper party. But I thought it appropriate for the parties to say their piece.
Because it came to us on appeal from the P and Z ruling, and that's how we, it ended up in this part of our life, so.
Correct. And, and the other thing the Asekiya Association can mention is, they felt that their members needed more notice of this to participate, and the remand would also give them that opportunity to participate in that. Yeah.
Be speaking to the P and Z with their conditions. We would only hear an appeal from either side.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you, and thanks for the point, Commissioner Fambro. So, Mr. Otio, could, could you, just for the benefit of all of us in the room, watching, sitting up here, down there, just, just very clearly explain what exactly we want people to be addressing today and what maybe not to be addressing, so that we're still, you know, neutral enough parties to vote for it, vote, vote on it, should that come before us?
Rachel can weigh in if she wishes, but that is our joint opinion of planning and legal, that this should be remanded. And that's the only issue that should be discussed, is whether this should go to P and Z in this, in the condition I just described. Nothing about the underlying case. That will be all argued before P and Z. And, and Madam Chair, and, and I will make sure that if anyone strays from that, that we call them on it.
Please.
Hold them to just address that.
Thank you, Mr. Otio. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it is just on whether this should go back to the drawing board or not today, not the actual project itself. Got it, thank you.
Okay, so with that being said, let's open it for the public at this point. And for the record, yes, Mr. Otio, please keep me in.
It will just be the parties to this case.
Oh, just the parties, okay, so that's right, because then we might, yeah, okay. Who's the, the other side of the party? Who's going to present? Is there anyone here that is presenting? Yes, please, come on up. And if you could please state your name for the record and, and just be sworn in. And I guess I should have said 10:56 for the record? We're opening this up, please, proceed.
Got it, sorry, ma'am.
Yes, right, he's gonna, oh, no? No?
Because it's just arguing.
Okay, 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 thank you. See, there it is, it's all so different. Okay.
So my name's Eli Sanchez, and I'm the appellant or petitioner to the, to the case. And, you know, this is fairly new to me, I'm not sure how to, what to say or what, what to bring about. But yeah, like Mr. Otio said, it did go to the Court of Appeals and to the Supreme Court of New Mexico as well, and they upheld the decision by the Court of Appeals. It, it was the covering of an Asekiya and, you know, according to the, I don't know how far I can go, because you guys said that we're just going to talk about the, the P and Z.
Right, whether or not go to P and Z, yes.
Oh, do I agree, is that what?
Yes, that's where we're at right now, is do you have any issues with it being remanded back to P and Z?
I don't know how to answer that. I would say
Just planning, I'm sorry.
To the planning.
Yeah, anyways, okay.
Is that up to, to me, to us to decide? I don't, I think it should go to P and Z. I think the decision has been made through the Court of Appeals, but I don't truly understand the whole process. I'm guessing it's being remanded so that corrections can be made and permit resubmitted or such? I'm not sure, you know, I can't.
Mr. Otio, do you want to help clarify that, so that Mr. Sanchez?
So, Mr. Sanchez, you're right that, that that's what the Court of Appeals has done, is remanded it to the county for rehearing of these matters. And that, the proper place for that rehearing, except on the Asekiya Association, they have their own process. But for the county, the proper place is Planning and Zoning Commission. From, from my perspective, you could comment on whether that's okay with you.
I would say it's okay with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You want to add anything else, are we?
Not at this point, I don't think.
Okay, in regards to that, okay, thank you. Okay, so is there anyone else that would like to, to speak in regards to, once again, we have to be very careful here, we don't cross the line. If it does get, so please, come on up. And your name?
My name is Alfred Trujillo from Orlando. I'm here on behalf of the Community Association. Much like Eli, you know, the process is confusing. Yes, it was remanded back to the county. It's my understanding that the Board of Commissioners are going to remand it to the Planning Commission. And ultimately, who makes the decision as to what happens? You know, the, you know, the, the resulting issues.
Does the, the Board of County Commissioners make that final decision? Is that correct, or?
Yes, Mr. Otio will clarify that.
So the, the process will be on a remand. It will go to Planning and Zoning to sort out how to hear the case, and they will hear the remand. And then they will either receive information from the Asekiya Association over the review of the Asekiya change, or whether that happens or not. But we can't do that piece, that's up to the Asekiya Association. But everything else will be heard by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then both parties will still have the opportunity to appeal that decision to the Board of County Commissioners. And hopefully, it won't get into a loop going back and forth, but that's the process.
Okay, and I, and I, and I don't fully understand the Asekiya Association being separate from this. Basically, they were not contacted in the first place, the Asekiya Association. The county gave the go-ahead to cover the Asekiya, to disregard setbacks.
I think we're, yeah, Mr. Otio, I think we're crossing the line right there, right?
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yes, that, all those issues can be fleshed out and argued before P and Z.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, anyone else that would like to speak in regards to whether they're in agreement or not in agreement to remand back to planning? Please.
I live there.
What's your name, if you can state your name?
Gary Sanchez.
And I know you, Gary, but just for the record, thank you.
I just want to see that you guys know the, just the pictures I took, the sand builds in.
Mr. Sanchez, at this point, and, and thank you very much, and we appreciate what you're trying to do here, but it just, to remind you that what's in front of us right now is whether you agree or disagree that it's remanded back to planning. And, and so
It should just be built again, I mean, refixed, cut.
Right, right.
Be cut, and covert needs to be cut.
I understand, so do you have any issues? I don't mean to interrupt, but do you have any issues with it being remanded back to planning? This whole case be remanded back to Taos County Planning Department?
Yeah, whatever needs to be done.
Okay, you're okay with that? That's all we need, yes, thank you. Okay, so anyone else? And I think, Anissa, what's going up? Okay, yes, we have someone online, please, go ahead and state your name. And, thank you, Jack, Mr. Hardwick, is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Jack Hardwick, and I represent Edmund Healy. And we concur with the decision to remand this back to the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in regards to what we're talking about right now? Remanding back, okay? I don't see anyone. Seeing none? Oh, is he on? Nick, would you like to say something? Nick Hara Mio? Oh, he just
I'm here, members of the commission, I was just listening in.
Okay, thank you.
Hope all is well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we close the public meeting? Or, it's not even a public meeting, I guess we do close the public, it's still a public meeting, but in regards to
That's all you need to do at this time.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we remand the Sanchez versus Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, number A-1-CA-37995, to the Planning Commission for them to go through the process.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to remand back to the Planning Commission. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash?
Yes.
Chair Vahill?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, okay, then that ends that, thank you very much. And we'll see where it goes from there, thank you. That was interesting, a little different than what we're used to. Okay, let's move on. Now we're at contracts agreements, MOUs and bids. Item A is discussion, consideration, and decision approving the procurement of cameras and equipment and giving authority to the county manager to sign the final contract for TCC 2022-50, Apex Solutions Incorporated, for the upgrade of the Taos County Courthouse video surveillance system, replacing existing analog video surveillance system with a Vigilon HD video surveillance through statewide price agreement, 00-00000-20-00093. zero zero dash twenty dash zero 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 nine three, and I believe in front of us, and yes, is our Sheriff, Jerry Hoagriff. Please proceed.
Good morning, how's everyone?
Great, how are you?
A lot of trials and tribulations getting this meeting, uh-
Oh, my goodness, yes.
The point it's been this morning, but thanks. I'll be short and brief, I know that you were provided in your packets the background of this, um, this project is one of three phases for upgrades in the courthouse, uh, the first phase being the analog cameras being replaced with a high-definition system, uh, which also has more cameras added to the system, such as, uh, the elevators that don't have them, others that don't function, and of course, it's, uh, state-of-the-art technology, high-def, that we would have the ability to view remotely and, and several other things. Uh, with that, um, we did get a bid last year, um, we were delinquent in getting that before the Commission, um, so this year's process I took on at the request of our county manager, um, the price, I believe, is two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for this first-phase upgrade, um, it's well worth it. To answer your question that's in your mind, what's the second, what's the third, the second would be the, um, system that ties to this one for the X-ray and scanner machine, and then the third phase would be the shot detection system, much like you find in, uh, most of your federal courthouses nowadays and things like that. Those, we are in hopes, will be paid for outside of Taos County funds through the administrative offices of the courts, and we're already working with them, uh, to, to develop that, um, in the next two years. So, that's it, stand for any questions.
Okay.
And of course, encourage you to approve county manager having final signature authority here.
Well, thank you for being proactive and, and always helping, um, you know, where, where the help is needed, so we appreciate that, really, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any questions?
I do, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, how many cameras, and then is it going to be in the tunnel too? So how many cameras total is it?
I can't recall the exact amount-
And it's just the courthouse, though, it's not the detention center, not in here.
No, the detention center has already been upgraded, that project was last year, this one is, is this year, and then, of course, there's another phase of cameras for this building and outlying buildings that would be forthcoming, I'm not a part of that one. Uh, I think we're adding a total of seven, we do have some exterior areas that, uh, currently are not, uh, covered by cameras, uh, and then the quality, some of the camera locations are in optical, which has, uh, down and then projects in four different directions, where right now, we only have one-directional cameras and things like that, it, it's a pretty extensive upgrade. I learned a lot about camera systems that I never knew and never really wanted to know, but now I do.
And then the tunnel, is it, are you going to put cameras in the tunnel?
There's already existing cameras in the tunnel, they are being upgraded to more high-def, yes.
And this will be used for video conferencing too, or not?
No, no, it has nothing to do with that. This is, this is security based.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank, any other questions, Commissioners?
Just a comment, there's possibly going to be some legislation this year that counties, some counties are going broke by having to build courthouses and maintain courthouses, smaller counties, they can't afford to do it, it's a state responsibility, but it falls on the county and out of their budget, and so there's some talk of some proposed legislation to where the state starts taking care of their stuff.
Right, that's great to hear, yeah.
Yes, I'd love that.
Talk is conversation.
With that, I move for approval, and I'm not reading all those zeros, I'm sorry.
Okay, I know.
For this HD Video Surveillance through the statewide price agreement.
I will second. Okay, great, so there's a motion and a second to approve the final contract for TCC twenty twenty-two dash fifty. I'll leave it at that, and, um, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes, any further discussion, Commissioners?
Thank, thank you, and could I just bring one point to Commissioner Fambro's, follow that legislation, there's some other things that need to be addressed too, such as juvenile detention centers, those should be a state obligation, not a county obligation. This one follows that, that thin gray line, if you will, because there is the statute under section four that says the sheriff has responsibility for security of courthouses and stuff, nowhere does it say that this county should be paying extraordinary amounts to house juveniles, and to the point, right now, if Commission doesn't know, um, San Juan just, uh, gave us notice that they're not going to accept ours until further notice due to staffing issues. The last three transports we've taken to Burnalee County in the last month, or tried to, have been denied, we have no facility right now available to us.
Thank you for, for saying that, um, just one last, uh, discussion, well, I, the first, the second and the third phase, you're saying will be handled or covered by whom? We believe, or you can't say that at this point?
I, I didn't quite understand.
You were saying the second phase and the third, yes.
That'll be your next sheriff, because we're out of time for this year.
Okay, got it, they need to go out and get the funding, got it, okay.
Part of that, uh, the X-ray machine, the courts are saying they're going to try to cover that cost through capital outlay.
Got it.
That was part of your face too.
Now I understand exactly what you're, yes, administrative office of the courts, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna try and obtain that funding, probably from the same source, uh, Commissioner Fambro just spoke of, but it's needed, our X-ray machine is, uh, I think it's going on sixteen years old now, uh, it's, it's working again, but we've had some failures and parts are hard to find for it, and it's analog, it's not even digital, it doesn't have shape recognition and things that alert, like the more modern and better equipment.
Yes, we need, we need it, thank you.
We need it upgraded, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, great, um, let's move on to, um, department matters. And, um, item A is District Five Health Council selections, and with us is Thak Cordova, H cap Director, hello?
Hello, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Harameo, Mr. Autio, I come before you, uh, as a follow-up from last Commissioner meeting, this is for the District Five Health Council, uh, open vacancy seat in, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell's District Five area, um, just for the record, I did not receive any more, I know we kind of prolonged it, we advocated one more time through our healthcare, um, meeting through the agenda, um, did you by chance receive anything else?
No, I would, uh, support appointment of Roxanne Sanchez to the position.
Thank you for that, uh, appreciate that, we will let her know, we have a meeting tomorrow at, uh, three for that purpose, and just to reconfirm, uh, just to let you know, I did meet with her, she is in alignment, she's, uh, understands the purpose, the mission, the value of the health council, and, uh, appreciates your selection, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, I do stand for any questions, if any.
No.
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, discussion, consideration, decision regarding a request for, is it Exxon? Am I saying that right, Enterprise Generations Three dash camera and body worn cameras for the Taos County Sheriff's Office, and our Sheriff once again.
And you did say that right, this is the current Generation Two cameras that we utilize, um, we've had good luck with them, their end of life, uh, we're having failures, I just had to buy four more of these to bridge us until we could get this before Commission today. These cameras are much more state-of-the-art, higher resolution, longer battery life, uh, the storage is, is better, we're also working with, uh, our IT Director, Colin Miller, to, uh, repurpose a standalone storage device for the Sheriff's Office and get out of the cloud storage, um, which does have its problems. This is a five-year contract for a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and it would include something that we don't have right now, that we phased out, was our, uh, archaic dash cameras that were in the units, um, for traffic-related things, dash cameras have a purpose where a belt or lapel camera doesn't capture, so we would have both abilities again, um, much like what most agencies are trying to transition to. And it would be paid for out of the ARP funding for the county.
Any questions?
Mr. Autio? Being that it's a five-year contract, we are, um, approving something of a future budget, which is approved by future Commissioners, I thought we weren't supposed to encumber future Commissioners.
Sir, I understand completely, Commissioner, that there, and all, uh, the Elsa's here, and, and there were some changes recently to the, uh, purchasing code-
Okay.
-for longer periods of time for certain things, and so I would just leave it to her discretion to say whether this felt-
Because I liked the five-year thing, then we don't have to do this, but I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
And they come with a five-year warranty, so.
Madam Chair, Commission, um, based on the statute through procurement, which did change in terms of contracts, um, because this particular contract is a lease and it's for products, it's not per se professional service, um, and it does exceed the twenty-five-thousand-dollar threshold, it could actually be renewed up to ten years. But of course, you know, there's those options where we have to do it yearly, make sure, unless we decide to do a lease agreement for five years straight to hold in this price, we can do that, but there may be circumstances, depending on technology and stuff, or upgrades, where prices may change, which we will probably have to come before the Commission and get approval again. But right now, it looks like it stands about a hundred and seventy-four thousand, from what I see in here.
Okay, we'll just allow that, and I move for approval.
Vice Chair has a question. Can I ask a question first? Should you take that back?
Then you can take it.
Okay, I will, I will second with discussion, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, thank you Sheriff, thank you Madam Chair, just a question on, um, the, where this, the budget this is coming out of, it says it's coming out of the ARP, the American Rescue Plan Act monies, is that, um, coming out of the county's whole bucket that we've been trying to spend for the last year and a half? And if so, I would just like to connect that to a request for an updated allocation of those monies, um, and those also, you know, the contracts are five years, the expense is now, right, because those monies have to be spent before five years from now?
Yes, we have to continue spending the first tranche before January, um, from what I see here on this lease, it's, it totals about, with tax, about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand a year, per year for the five years, which equals a one-seventy-four, um, I'm not sure if we're paying it yearly, I would assume a yearly amount, a lump sum, um, you know, which will include obviously services for the cloud and everything for them to download, um, it would start on December of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, this, and, and, thank you, uh, thank you Elsa, that, that, I think if it is paid yearly, then the ARP monies don't work, because they have to be paid, they have to be used up by the end of, and I also just want to make sure that this falls into the allowable use for the ARPA funds.
Well, we, we currently, we could pay it in one lump sum for the full five years, if we do, like I say, lock in this price, and town will pay you lump sum for five years, and that way, uh, the Sheriff's Department doesn't have to worry for five years on, and obviously work on getting more money at that point to pay for the next one coming around.
And, and thank you, Madam Chair, that's, that's just what I wanted to, like, raise a flag for us, because-
I mean, it's, it's just that how the county wants to pay it.
Right, okay, okay, and I would just ask, as, you know, and, and I suppose this goes to, to you, as well as Mr. Harameo, as our interim finance director, I would really love for us to see an updated kind of tally sheet for where the ARPA funds, where the rescue plan funds are, are going, like, where are we, I know we had some left over for the, the slice of that we allocated for internal, such as this, if this is actually allowable use under federal guidance, um, but I just, I, I, I don't want us to go too far down the path of just, you know, every meeting whittling away at that tranche of money one-offs, like, we, we started with a kind of a, a, a complete picture of what the county needed and what the community needed, um, and I have no problem with, with this expense, I just want to make sure that we're not just sort of like one-offing that money out, out the door. Uh, just, just a heads up for our process internally.
Sure.
And, and I'll take a little responsibility for that, because it wasn't until about six, eight weeks ago, that it came to my attention, this was, uh, an expense that could be paid for with ARP, uh, and, and of course, I'm going to jump in and try to take advantage of that, but again, this is over five years, we're talking about thirty-five thousand a year, and it locks us into this firm price, and, and as you know, the cost of everything is just going up every month, every year, so.
Totally appreciate it, Sheriff.
Thanks for your considerations, all I can say.
Thank you, and just, the, the team knows that when we see Rescue Plan Act, like, I, I go into full speed ahead, because there's-
If I'd have known that this was, uh, an opportunity back-
Right.
-months ago, I would have been here much sooner.
And I, I just, three cameras, right, we're talking about three cameras?
No, no, Generation Three cameras.
Got it, okay, because I was like, oh my gosh.
Thirty, thirty-five of these.
Thirty-five, very good.
Basically, this is a Gen Two camera.
Got it, understand.
Gen Three is the next generation.
Thank you for clarification.
It also includes dash cams for all the units.
Very good.
With obviously unlimited cloud space for them to store all that video.
Does that include the additional staffing that, that, uh, that I believe we're going to be talking about in the near future?
The, the grant is on your consent agenda, the Governor's Grant for-
Right, does that include those individuals?
Yes, it gives us a few spare cameras for loss, I mean, we've had a few go in the river, we've had some that, you know, get knocked off during struggles and get broken, and, um, yeah, it, it does, they are awarded, but unfortunately, not for that stuff.
Okay, thank you, so there's been a motion and a second, um, any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes. Okay, next, we've got item C, request for updated out-of-state travel for Evidence Technician Sasha Sanchez for Evidence Manager Certification Course for Actual Reimbursement, original class was in Denver, Colorado, on eight twenty-two of twenty twenty-two to eight twenty-six of twenty twenty-two, this was canceled and has been rescheduled for the eleventh, the twenty-eighth day of twenty twenty-two to the twelfth, second of, of December twenty twenty-two in Las Vegas, Nevada. And Sheriff, it's yours again.
I'm back again, thank you, um, that pretty much explains it, this is a course that is a manager certification, not just a training, and a certification such as this gives the evidence tech, um, that, uh, ability to testify as an expert in certain things in the court and stuff, so, uh, we've been trying to get this one going for a while, and unfortunately, the cost, the location, it's been canceled twice, and now we have an opportunity, and it's in Las Vegas, Nevada, of all places, but, um, yeah, I respectfully request approval for the out-of-state travel for Ms. Sanchez.
Um, I have a quick question, there's, in the agenda item description, there's a name of Eliza Espinoza, what, what, um-
That was-
Yeah, why is that name there?
So, that goes back to the very first time that we tried to get Eliza, who was our evidence tech at the time, into this training, and then it was canceled, and it was canceled, and now it's in Las Vegas, um, Eliza's no longer with us, she is, uh, dispatch supervisor, yes, uh, number two in command there, which is a very good fit for her, um, we were sorry to lose her from the office, but we, we really need that for evidence custodian to be a qualified expert in this field to testify to certain things as it comes up in major cases.
Great, thank you, any questions, Commissioners? Anyone want to entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve this request for updated out-of-state travel for Evidence Technician Sasha Sanchez for the Evidence Manager Certification Course for Actual Reimbursement.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second to, uh, for approval, um, as stated, I'm going to go and leave it at that, and, uh, with that being said, a discussion?
Just, uh, a ask from the Sheriff, um, is this part of the PATC, uh, uh, trainings? I think it's a, I think that's the acronym for it, but I've, as a, as an elected official as a mayor, I've gone to a couple of these trainings that they've had, and they are pretty, they're very useful, and there's, they have other topic idea, uh, other settings in the meetings, if it's, what I'm thinking this one is, and it's like for, you know, toxic employees to, how to handle, uh, other parts of law enforcement, so I don't know if this is part of it, but I think it's-
It's, it's encouraging to see these people go out there and get some of this, I, yeah, I can't say that it's anything that I've seen offered through NMC or even at our state level, this is a manager certification nationally, so I, I think it goes beyond that training that you're talking about.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question, how, how long do you have to store evidence?
How long do you have to store evidence? Is there a statute?
There are numerous statutes that govern that. Generally speaking, on most cases, it's through adjudication of the case and then whatever length of time there is for an appeals process. In certain cases, it goes to as much as 18 years. There are some that are even lifetime that, such as a first-degree CSP rape case or something. Certain evidence must be stored forever. Other things don't, and that's part of the certification process, not only for handling, processing, packaging, but for retentions. And we're going to be working closely when the county gets their IPR and records clerk in exactly what you just said, because we do have a lot of things that I know could be, destruction order could be sought on and gotten rid of.
Thank you.
And we've done some along the way. There's more to be done.
Any further discussion? May I then call for the vote, please? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the consent agenda, item A, approval of DFA resolution number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a proposal. We, it's custom of this board to read all of the consent agenda items, but this one's about an arm long, and you, there's no legal requirement to do so. The agenda has been published, each item that is on that agenda, we have notice of, so it's your discretion, I mean, just.
Good to know, yes, absolutely. And Commissioners, do you see any reason why we would do something different, read it all? Okay, so seeing no opposition there, I'm going to go ahead and say, okay, we're at consent agenda, before us is items A through O as published, and is.
Madam Chair, if no commissioner wants to pull any item, I move for the approval of the consent agenda, A through O.
Okay, does anyone want to pull?
Yes, I would like to pull item G, please.
I amend my motion to approve the consent agenda, A through O, with the exception of G, for Commissioner O'Donnell's presentation.
I will second that motion. Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes.
Okay, then correct me if I'm wrong, people keep me straight here. So since one has been pulled, we have to, we'll be listening to item G, and then we'll go back to the vote for, so it's been approved with the exception. Got it, okay. Okay.
And thank you, Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions related to our discussion with general counsel. This is the 1.4 million for improvement to the mobile Matanza, develop a wash, pack aggregation value-added processing center, and invest in a commissary kitchen in Taos County. So let me, I just want to be clear, TCEDC owns the building, we are like a pass-through agency for this grant, we're checking reimbursements, making sure everything's legal. Does this, however, apply that we still need some kind of management contract with TCEDC or not?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, no, we don't need a management agreement with TCEDC. We do need, we do need an agreement with them for, and with the school districts and the charter schools, that this grant is going to allow us to buy the equipment. So for example, there's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollar refrigerator that's going to be owned by Taos County, and we do need to have an agreement that Mr. Schaefer's working on. We haven't received that copy, we met with Mr. Schaefer, us Thursday, the two of us, and Ms. Montoya, along with a couple of other DFA members, so they're going to provide us the agreement, it has to be between TCEDC and Taos County to allow us to, allow them to house the equipment there. The same thing's going to apply with the different school districts, and Mr. Schaefer, and those other meetings he talked about applying, to be able on the smaller items over a period of time to transfer ownership to the school district for that, the equipment, it's going to be probably a little bit different on that, 300,000 dollar refrigerator.
Wow. Okay, and so commissary kitchen, where's that, what's that?
And that's, Ms. Montoya, Mr. Vahill got that from the grant agreement, so that's what's included in the grant agreement, so they took the language from it. There's also a partnership with TCEDC and MICA.
ITIS and.
MICA to prepare the food for the charter schools, so they will be, example, think of the St. Grande as an example, they'll prepare lunch, MICA's organization will prepare the lunch for that school, so that way they have fresh beef or fresh vegetables as an example.
Out of the kitchen, yeah.
So out of that kitchen.
Very good, thank you, all right. That answers my question, and this was a state grant, not a, for some reason, I thought it was a federal grant, but with.
No, it's, Commissioner O'Donnell, it's a state grant, so basically, any assets that, as we function as a fiscal agent for TCEDC, any of the assets, the way Mr. Schaefer explained to us, would belong to Taos County. Obviously, once depreciation happens, and depending on the market value, at that point, if it's, as long as it's housed in Taos County, and they're working in conjunction, Taos County provides those services to our community, to our kids, to the schools and so forth, they're allowed to house them within their organization or their building, but the, per se, their property is in ours, the property that we're purchasing does belong to Taos County, but at that point, depending on the market value, when we decide to transfer it over to them, then at that point, we would do it through, obviously, through resolution or whatever we need to do, MOU. However, we have to transfer the assets based on state statute.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may make a motion to approve DFA resolution number 822-2023, final budget, a resolution requesting to establish fund and budget for the grant fund food 2000-TCT CEDC from DFA to LGC to expand and improve the mobile Matanza, develop a wash and pack aggregation and value-added processing center, and invest in the commissary kitchen in Taos County.
Okay, there's a motion, I will second that, and please call for the vote.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Atchio, you saved, saved me a lot of. Okay, so next, we're in county managers' report and matters, and there will be an update to the county commission on various items affecting Taos County and our county manager, Brent Adamio, please.
Yeah.
Oh, you do, oh, good.
Madam Chair, Mr. Atchio waited eight years to let us, for eight years, we had to read everything, and now he wants to short, thank you. And he didn't know about the one o'clock meeting either. I'm getting older, I don't have much time left, so I. All right, I want to begin in the consent agenda, the sheriff whispered into me here, now, there's the state grant agreement for law enforcement fund application, it's about approximately 390,000, what he reminded me about is that we're going to have to move fairly quickly on it, or it does revert back, so we'll be taking a look at getting that spent as soon as possible. I also would like to begin with ARP funding, we're still not able to draw down the second tranche, myself and Anissa, Anissa's taking more of the lead, has been able, we had to recreate my IDMe profile, and we've been trying to draw down the second tranche, Joy Asparza is trying to help with that, San Miguel County is not, is also having problems drawing down their second tranche, with their second, drawing down their second tranche. So we've been working with the treasury, I think Anissa's talked to them twice already on the helpline to do that, and so we're going to see if anything's changed today, since we've been down here, we didn't look at it today. The application is complete, Helen and Nina worked on that two weeks ago and got that complete, the landing page for the application of Task Community Foundation has been completed as well. Mr. Van Vleek from Mr. Atchio's office has completed the agreement, all we need to insert is the dollar amount for Task Community Foundation. Nina and myself did meet last Friday to make sure we're on the same page to launch. We wanted to have a meeting with Ms. O'Brien yesterday, but she was not available, so we proposed having a meeting tomorrow to give us a launch date. And we would have, they were both available to meet this morning, but obviously, I wasn't available because of the commission meeting, so by the end of the week, I'll be able to provide the commission when we'll launch that, so there'll be 500,000 available for the community to apply for funding. We met with Mr. Abeta, our engineer of record on La Morada Road, probably about three weeks ago now, he's going to provide, I don't know if he's provided it yet to Ms. Vahill, but he's going to provide the bed docks to Ms. Vahill, so we can get out the invitation to bid for that construction, now that that construction season's upon us, we still also need to complete the purchases for the rightaways from the three different properties, so he's subcontracted out the attorney by, must have been Renee Barrela Gutierrez, so she's a subcontractor for, for Mr. Abeta to acquire those parcels for us, two from private landowners and one from the Taos Municipal School District. The draft RFP for detox has been completed by legal counsel, I'd like to thank Mr. Trujillo for that. From this point forward, Ms. Vahill and Mr. Cordova are the responsible parties on the RFP. Mr. Trujillo is still working on the lease for the building, so that's not completed, but he is working on the lease. Ms. Vahill and myself met with Mr. Trujillo last week, so we're now in charge of the RFP to get that out at appropriate time to move forward with that. Sent an email over the weekend, or on Friday night, regarding the local assistance travel, local assistance travel consistency fund, the county is eligible to receive 3,52,114 dollars in two separate tranches, we do have to apply for it. We didn't know it, but I believe that features there where we're trying to draw down the ARP, so we do need to apply for it. I haven't, did take a webinar yesterday, I'll pass this out, I think there's great latitude in how the money is spent, I know we're missing another, the treasury webinar right now, but you know, Ms. Asparza will get us the information, but this is the NACO presentation from yesterday. So I believe we're going to be able to draw that link down, because I did see that on the, on the treasury portal, that we can draw down funds. We received word last week that we're not receiving congressionally-directed spending for the expansion of the detox building. I have not talked to Ms. O'Connell yet, I'm going to, I wanted to call her before the meeting, didn't have that opportunity to call Ms. O'Connell and see what happened. So we're not getting congressionally-directed spending. Fire and EMS, along with Jason, and if I can come down for a few minutes, we're meeting with the municipalities and their finance directors, administrators, managers regarding the gross receipts tax that's on the ballot, on the November ballot. I, Ms. Montoya did provide me a copy of that, I didn't afford that to you all, didn't get a chance to make copies before I came down. As you know, the cameras system is dying, Mr. Miller has solicited a quote from Apex Solutions, he submitted it to Ms. Vahill this morning to come and troubleshoot the camera system, and then we are going to have to replace it. So the Apex Solutions quote is a short-term fix, who else I need to work with Apex to get the quote on the long-term fix. Yesterday, speaking of unfunded mandates, Mr. Silva, and I think him, had a kind of drop what he was doing, there was a gas leak at the public health office, and so it's on our side, so we're going to have to hire a contractor to install a new gas line, the, and Mr. Sanchez went out there, as well as Mr. Alfred and Mr. Adamio as well, so we're going to have to do a new gas line for the public health office, I think we're also going to provide them heaters as well, and of course, the new, the area where the gas leak is, is under the new pavement, so Mr. Sanchez has recommended to Mr. Silva that we trench around it and not tear up the new pavement, I don't think there's anything different than that. If you have any questions, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Adamio are here. Something that Richard doesn't know, moving on, is Felicity Foncesca at North Central Economic Development District has assigned a grant writer to begin working on a grant for the Save Americas Treasure Grant Program for the historic county courthouse, I need to get her over some background information, she sent me the email, we were looking at this about two weeks ago, and I do think it's a fit for, for the, for the historic county courthouse, so we have the, I think we have, from our architects, we have the necessary documents that we can provide to her native winds radio station, it's a brand-new radio station, is going to be up and running in the next couple of weeks, they want to ask for our permission to place their logo on their, on their billboard, and they're also asking permission from the town of Taos, this is a venture between Mr. Daniel Cordova and I believe Pecorice Pueblo, and they want to go more to community reporting versus, Mr. Cordova will come and make a presentation in the next couple of weeks, so for an example, when we close a transfer station, the other radio stations want the charges for that, they think it's, so they're going to do a lot of this stuff as a community service and get the word out for us, based on a community service versus advertising. Anissa is also, this is kind of a conversation that relates to Mr. Schaefer's conversation, the Taos Mountain balloon rally folks want to use the property next door for the balloon rally that's always taking place, we've talked to legal counsel, Mr. Van Vleek on it, and we are going to require insurance, so we're still working with Taos Mountain balloon rally folks, so this is a new challenge that we have. The New Mexico Game and Fish and North Central Economic Development District have been in conversations with both of them, they want to lease office space from us at the Ag Center, there is two separate office suites, they know that we're waiting on a appraisal to be done before we can even, before we can even enter into the, an agreement with them. As most of you know, Mr. Madrid lives here in Taos, and Ms. Foncesca lives in Dixon, so having an office space here makes more sense than them driving to Santa Fe. so having an office space here makes more sense than them driving to Santa Fe. And they, plus they do a lot of work with our communities within Taos County. And then, so Game and Fish wants to open an office, and to me, it's, and I think those two agencies can share the same office suite. So, and then North Central Economic Development District did park their car here as well. So what was happening is Ms. Francesca would have to drive to Santa Fe and pick up a motor pull vehicle, then drive to Raton as an example. So they did ask permission, and I did give them permission last week to park a vehicle here. I don't know if it's, or at the senior center, but I know Mr. Madrid emailed or text on Friday if they could park the car already, and I said that'll be fine. So and I could stand for questions now on what I talked about, or if you wanna move on to Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Adamea.
Just, we have a few questions, the vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Brent. Just, it's more a comment. The radio station geared toward community service announcements is an interesting idea. Your example, I think is a great example. We would have to get the transfer station closure info somehow from our team to that radio station. So as that goes forward, like that's a process opportunity, like that information, if we're gonna build in those kind of channels, again, let's not do it on a one off, let's do it in an organized way so that information's also going to someone who's putting it on the website. You know, if we're gonna funnel public service announcements out there, we should be broadcasting them as well and not just somebody else's radio station, if that makes sense. It's a, it's a process, not just, not just a one off activity.
Right, no, yes, I understand where you're coming from or what you want. And Mr. Gutierrez usually emails directly the radio stations, but we can easily work that, because we're, at least I'm copied on it, and Mr. Silva's copied on it as well, so.
Cool, thank you.
So we can work on it.
I just see an opportunity there for us to get our word out farther and wider.
Any other questions?
The new radio station is just for Pinasco or the whole?
It's the whole area. I don't know, I don't know their broadcasting range. He did tell me that he wants to come and present to the commission.
Great, great. So the way Picarice is involved is they probably wanna rent antenna?
I'm not sure. He didn't give me those details. He just, it was more of a passing that he told me, but I just didn't want you all to be surprised, because he's starting to move fairly quick.
And how soon will we have the appraisals done for the office space for Game and Fish and North Central?
There's no timetable. We've not received a quote back. So the priority is the Taos Nest building. Number two priority is the Detox building. And then the third priority is the Ag Center building. And then the fourth priority would be the community centers.
Okay. I'm not sure why the Detox and the Nest are one, two, the way they're listed, but, because the Detox has been one of our main focuses. But I think it's just a matter of probably a couple of weeks or a month.
Because Mr. Trujillo's completed the lease agreement for Taos Nest, and so him and Ms. Hummel have worked on it. It's probably been completed for a couple of weeks now. So all we need to move forward on the Nest is the lease agreement.
Got it.
I mean, excuse me.
The appraisal.
The appraisal.
Yes, got it.
So the lease agreement's been done. I believe Catherine signed off on it.
Oh, good, okay, got it.
And are they able to move in anyway? Or do you have to do the appraisal?
No, we have to do the appraisal, plus they also want to do work in there, because there has to be sprinkler system. And let me pull up an email from Ms. Romero. So we, Chair Vahill, or Commissioner Vahill, myself, did have a meeting yesterday with Ms. Hummel, because they're looking for emergency space to house the homeless. Catherine did send us an email today that we are looking from mid-December to the end of February, that are the coldest months. So we've talked about next door. Her concern is it doesn't have a sprinkler system. Ms. Romero has reviewed the regulations of, and I just think, I've reviewed the regulations, and first of all, I wanna say, when you asked the question, I was thinking of an assembly area and not a sleeping area. With that said, an emergency shelter, homeless shelter, would be classified as R1, just like a hotel motel. Therefore, a fire sprinkler system would be required to be installed. I'll defer to Chief Cordova and Fire Marshal Hampton to confirm, because there may be other regulations for existing buildings not having a sprinkler system. So our immediate offer was next door, and then we thought, okay, we'll work it out in the meantime. But they also wanna get regulated, and part of that regulation is that they have a sprinkler system.
And in reference to the Ag Center, can we move in Game and Fish and North Central now?
Well, I would like to follow what Mr. Schaefer has said, because Game and Fish would not be providing a service to Taos County. There could be an argument for North Central Economic Development District providing a service to Taos County. But then, like Mr. Schaefer said, and Mr. Ochoa said in the past, so you determine that value of that rent, and if, if it's 500 a month, then North Central's providing $500 worth of services to us, then that would negate them paying the fair market value. But we need the fair market value also to determine that the rental amount, but then the value of the services. It's just like the question you asked, Mr. Schaefer, because you hit the nail on the head with that. It's, how do you determine the, determine the value of those services? If they're providing janitorial services, then I guess we'd cost that out. And then, that's another thing too, is we do have janitorial services in that building, so we could attribute some of that rent to that as well, and we probably need to address that a little bit better.
Thank you.
So just another part of the conversation that I had, that we had with Ms. Hummel yesterday, is the building that we bought, the former building of Living Word Ministries. We talked about busing up to North Osceo. Ms. Hummel says busing to the shelter has only been successful in urban areas where a bus ride is minimal, less than 10 minutes. Unfortunately, when the bus ride is longer, people don't have access to the service. This means that Living Word Ministries building would not be a viable solution. Weather, last year, 50% of the days, December 1st to February 28th, had low temperatures below 10 degrees, and there are no days, and there are no days of extreme cold in October, November, and only two days in March. There's very few snowfalls over six inches. Given that, we'd like to operate daily from December 1st to February 28th as opening versus not every other day would be very challenging. So we are trying to work on the homeless issue as well, so.
Well, there was the suggestion that maybe we could bus people from here to the living, what is it called, the Living Word?
Living Word Ministries.
But according to Catherine Hummel, she doesn't think that's a viable solution for the obvious reasons of having to move people from point A to point B. So really, what's being asked now is if we can help in regards to a location. And so the Ag Center has been asked if that, you know, could be used as an emergency shelter.
And, Madam Chair, Mr. Hermio, I really appreciate the two of you meeting with Ms. Hummel yesterday to try to work toward a solution. And I honestly really am grateful for our community to continue to put pressure on us to be part of keeping vulnerable people safe. So, you know, the clock is ticking, the calendar days are, right, tomorrow it won't be your birthday anymore, Brent? Like, we have a limited number of weeks to be part of the solution, so I really appreciate you both, and I appreciate our community basically like demanding that we be part of the solution, because we have to protect the people who need the biggest protection. My only other comment is, I'm really interested in about your statement that Game and Fish isn't providing a service to Taos County. I'm gonna be thinking about that. Let's think about that, because I'm not, not so sure they don't.
They're not providing us, they're not providing a service to Taos County government.
All right.
So that, we can debate on with the attorneys, so.
Okay, no, I won't, I won't. I just, okay.
So I just don't wanna, just want more information on the Ag Center main room as emergency homeless shelter during the months of coldest weather. Could someone talk to me more about this?
Well, once again, it was a conversation, it's been an ask from the community, how are we going to help? Can you guys help? And so it's just a discussion, nothing is in front of the commission right now. But, you know, in my mind, and I'm just one commissioner, but it wasn't so much about whether we were or were not. To me, it's a given, we should. It's just a matter of the details, and so, but that's, that's coming from me, you know? And so, yeah, there is an ask, and we automatically thought, well, the Nest, well, we refer to, I refer to it as the Nest, it's the old senior center, but, because that's the intent, right? To help the, those that are in need. But it's not quite ready yet. And as Brent has stated very clearly, there are some things that need to be worked out as well as, I think even as, the other thing, I'm not sure if you mentioned, is right now the zoning and their, they need to go through, Catherine and that group needs to go through the Town of Taos to get that changed. But, so there's things that they need to still do to make that happen. Meanwhile, we're already going into a cold season. We're being asked, can you help us during this winter season? And, and so that's where we're.
I just think we need to talk more about this. It's an agricultural facility, not a homeless shelter.
And I didn't refer, I don't think I ever said anything about the homeless going in.
No, but some, this was just brought up, so I just think, I don't know about regs, I don't know anything about that, but, you know, I just.
It's an emergency, it would be an emergency.
We would need to discuss it, whether it's viable. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I just have one question, and that is in regards to your report on the ARPA money. And I just want clarification. It's not enough just to have it allocated by the end of the year, we have to actually have it out the door on the money. Is that correct? So that means we gotta move fairly quick here, right?
It was by 2023 for to spend the first tranche. So you can draw it on the second tranche, but they reversed that rule out, so that's why we're trying to pull down the second tranche. Probably in the month of October, November the latest, we're gonna have all the ARPA money sitting in the bank. Once, once I can draw it down, we'll be, we'll have all our money sitting here.
Right, but the question is, we're not gonna lose it if we don't spend it at the end of the year, not all of it, I'm talking about the first tranche.
No, that's, and I've talked to Mrs. Asparza about that, that's what they were saying at the beginning, but she doesn't believe that to be the case.
Got it, okay. I just don't wanna lose it here. Okay, thank you. And one last question, Morada, I think you gave that update. Will we see that project being worked on within the next?
Which project?
The Morada Road?
Yes, so, did you get you the?
It's gonna happen this year, right? We're not gonna be pushing this down the?
He did, Ms. Vahill did confirm that he did get us the bid packet. We still need to do those three purchases. It's not on us, it's on his subcontractor. And then Ms. Vahill needs to get out the bid, and then we hoped, hopefully somebody will bid on it. And we need, we wanna get it done now because the SEC is not flowing. So that's, I know she has a lot of priorities, and that's one of her main priorities.
Okay, thank you, that's all I've got.
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I would like to see on the agenda, Road Department, current inventory, vehicles that are broken, vehicles that are needed in various districts. I would really appreciate that. I'm still gonna advocate for that 750 that we didn't have to spend on Pilar Bridge to some of that money be put into road equipment. So I'd like to see a report as to where the funds are gonna go, what's needed, what's broken, and why it's broken. Because we've got winter coming on, and if we don't have equipment, how are these guys gonna plow the roads? So if you could ask our Road Department or Mr. Silva to give us an overview, inventory from assets, to see what's not working, what needs to be retired. I just wanna make sure our rural areas have the road equipment they need to do the job. So if you would please consider getting that on the agenda, please?
We'll get it on the agenda. We won't be able to put it on, we won't be able to put it on two weeks from today.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we're on item B, discussion on community center request for proposals and management agreements.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, there is the two documents that are attached that a legal counsel has reviewed, and they're boilerplate at this point. We've had them completed. We need to, in the near future, issue out requests for proposals for the community centers.
They're not on here, Brent, we didn't see them. They didn't get attached.
Okay, apologize. They should have been attached to your packets, and I didn't double check. But anyways, can you email them out to you? It's, it's not, I just wanted to show that the documents are complete. Each RFP would probably be slightly different depending on the area of the county. And like I said, the lease agreement, like Mr. Schaefer was talking about, has been completed, and it's been completed by Mr. Ochoa or his office. And so we're ready to move forward with that when the first opportunity arises.
Madam Chair, I'd really like to start with Pinasco. As far as getting a management contract in place, given the 3 million and the times, the clock is ticking on the 3 million to advance the Pinasco Community Center. And didn't I hear in this discussion that an RFP may not be necessary? Or is it? I mean, we can go a different route other than an RFP. We can get the groups together and they can, tell me.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Donal, the RFP is not necessary, they're gonna pay the fair market value of the rent. So if, if it's PACA or if it's somebody else pays, if it's $1,000 a month and they pay the county $1,000 a month, we don't need to go out for RFP. So it's, it's the, kind of the same thing with Detox, the Nests, and all the, well, the Nest is a little bit different thing. But if they pay the fair market value, then they don't have to go out for, we don't have to go out for RFP. Like you mentioned in with Mr. Schaefer, there's, there's gonna be very little organizations that are gonna be able to afford to pay the fair market value.
So we will do an RFP then, is probably?
We'll have to do an RFP. We do have a lot, a lot on our plate. We need to work on the audit. We're gonna be meeting internally tomorrow regarding the audits. There's a lot of of items that need to get done over the next couple of months.
And I envision that when we're ready to make this move, we're going to be having this conversation with those, the individuals that are already managing community centers, and really looking at what they provide. So, I don't see this happening anytime in the immediate, is that correct?
Correct. Ms. Montoya did invite, it's probably not 100%, but anybody that she's dealing with right now. They did get invited to attend the meeting to hear Mr. Schaefer's presentation. Commissioner Daigle's asked the gentleman from Cerro Community Center, those two gentlemen here, were asked to attend. I thought Ms. Gonzalez was gonna be here, I didn't email her, but everybody that Ms. Montoya has worked with was invited to attend the meetings, to hear Mr. Schaefer's presentation.
Madam Chair, I hear you've said this before, that these management contracts aren't a priority. As we've noticed for eight years, I've been asking, we have no management contracts, none for Pinasco. I would really like to at least start with Pinasco. I've been asking to get this done. I don't care about the other ones, but I think we have to start somewhere. And there are plenty of other groups up there that want to put in their hat to manage it. So, it's just disappointing if, what I'm hearing is, this won't even get started, until after I'm gone. I think it's a problem.
Nobody is. So that Commissioner Donald Oliver's saying is, we have some other things that need to get taken care of. And once those other items are taken care of, then we can go to the work on the community centers. The easiest solution would have been to do one blanket request for proposal, but we've learned that we're not gonna be able to do that. I think we can pair up a couple of community centers as one RFP. For example, Yano Kimado and Amalia probably operate similarly. I think Prado and Topo would probably operate more similar than, than, than Yano or Amalia. So, I do think we can synergize at least those two, because there'll be more of a party centers than a community center.
And, I don't know how many times I'll bring it up again. I like the way Topo's run, they've got low rental fees compared to Pinasco, that charges $250. Topo's charging $50. This is hurting the rural communities, it is hurting the constituents in Pinasco, who can't afford to have funerals, or weddings, or whatever. It's, I just want to get this fixed, Mr. Harmel, please, I'm begging you, let's get this done. Thank you.
Okay, so, we, any other questions regarding that? No, I think we've, okay, let's move on. Veterans Cemetery update, Richard Sanchez, please, thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioners, glad to be here. Can you say you wanna run the footage for the drone?
What's there?
So, progress on the Veterans Cemetery is coming along real well. The biggest issue has been a little bit of weather, we haven't lost too much time on weather days. As you can see, on the serial view, drainage park is completed, there's electrical trenches going in all along the perimeter, curb gutters in place. Kid Carson has dropped our underground power to the facility. We still have a transformer yet, but we're one step closer. Like I said, you can see all the curb gutters in place. We could pave already, but we're waiting a little bit to get more of the landscaping, topsoil in, the last of the electrical conduits that run to the committal shelter, to the flag lights. The plaza, the sleeves for the flags are already in place. And you just saw, as we panned over, there was a big hole in the ground. We did the required crypt strength test last week, that the Department of Veterans Affairs requires you bury three crypts, just like you're burying them in the crypt field, compacted, cover them with gravel, cover them with the exact soil that you're using, topsoil. And then you have to expose them to a 12,000-pound axle load. And so, that went real well. There was no obvious damage at all to the crypts. The internal shelf also has to be able to support 400 pounds. My condolences, it supports 400 pounds, because I was one of the persons standing on it. You can see the topsoil for the landscaping is already starting to be placed. Landscapers will probably start in two weeks. The bulk of the crypts will start being delivered in about two weeks also. Because of the weight of the crypts, and they're coming all the way from Wisconsin, it'll probably be a 14 to 21-day project. You can only get from seven to 10 crypts per semi. And we have 96 crypts that are going in place. You see the piles of gravel, that's part of the requirements for the drainage of the crypts. It's gonna be a really nice cemetery. My goal is, for this year's Veterans Cemetery, and landscapeers feel it's pretty good, is to have most of the shrubbery in, will be paved before wintertime comes, and we'll have, they'll be working on sprinklers and drip irrigation for the whole facility. The septic field is already in place, that's the area just to the right of the drainage pond. We probably won't put sod down or reseed this year. So, all the areas that have been cleared, that you see that are dirt right now, part of the contract is to reseed them with wild grasses and miscellaneous flowers and everything. We will have, those areas in general aren't irrigated, but we will have areas that we can attach hoses and run sprinklers, so that we can make sure that they germinate next spring, and we don't have just dirt areas. If we could have gotten in a little bit sooner with our permit, we leave CID alone, but a little bit earlier, we might have gotten the sod in. The sod is required in the burial areas for us to operate. So, in all likelihood, we will have a complete cemetery by the end of the year, with the exception of sod, and possibly the committal shelter. We're working on developing the committal shelter, we had budget, we had enough money budgeted, but we didn't award the contract for the committal shelter, because we knew that there were gonna be some price increases with everything that's going on with COVID. Right now, it appears that the county's committed to building the committal shelter. We don't need, we probably won't need the whole $300,000, because like I said, we did have $250,000 that we had enough to cover it, but we've used it. Crypt costs went up $38,000. Irrigation pumps are up about $13,000, some of the electronics, asphalt's gone up a little bit. So, everything goes well, by springtime, we'll have a committal shelter, crypts will be re-sodded, and we'll be just maintaining it, and ready to implement burials. My goal, and contractor knows, and all the contractors know, excuse me, for Veterans Day, is to have either an open house, or maybe even a flag raising ceremony. We'll have our flag poles in place, we should have the concrete sidewalks in place, we will be paved. And so, I'd like the veterans of Taos and the surrounding areas to be able to come and look at it, and get a good feel for it. It's gonna be a beautiful facility. Any questions?
Glad to see it's moved along, it's, you can see the tremendous work that's been put into it. And so, really happy to see that it's moving.
Good. Facility build, and all the subcontractors involved, some local subcontractors, town contractors, everybody is very cognizant of the quality that we want, because we don't have any, won't have any issues. There have been a couple of issues in some of the other state cemeteries. We've addressed them in the design and the implementation of the work, and so we feel pretty confident that this should be 100-plus-year cemetery to start off with. One major change that we have done is, Department of Veterans Affairs has brought to our attention that there should be an area of, a burial area for native veterans who don't wanna be in crypts. And so, the initial design had 96 crypts, concrete crypts, double crypts for a veteran and spouse, or a veteran and independent child. And then we had two more burial areas for 200, 200 in-ground cremated remains. So what we've decided to do is eliminate one area, which is about 100 cremated remains, there are only three by three plots, whereas a burial requires three by eight. So, we're gonna eliminate one cremated remains burial area, and convert, and change it to a native veterans' burial area. So, native veterans that do not wanna be buried in a crypt, or a casket, can be buried directly in. The pueblo is 1,400 feet, as the crow flies, from our northwest corner, so it's pretty close to native soil, so we're hoping to encourage native veterans to use the facility. We will still have, excuse me, 100 direct burial cremated remains, and then we'll have two more 100 vaults for cremated remains above ground.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Appreciate it, all the hard work put into it.
Yeah, it's a good project.
Yeah, it is exciting. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, Commissioners, nothing else for Richard, let's move on to the historic county courthouse update, Richard.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so, like I said, we're cutting CID a little bit of slack. Our bill impairment has been paid for for quite a while, they're still trying to locate it, to issue it at the correct date. We've had a couple of progress meetings, and discussions of the mobilizations and the schedules. Now, with the additional state legislative money, that was in improvement grant today, I believe, we are increasing the scope of the contract. So we have Phase One, it'll probably be Phase One, 1A, 1B. ADA is still the priority, because we have to expend that funds. Demolition will likely start, excuse me, late next week. We will probably fence, we are gonna fence off the areas that'll be affected. We will probably lose nine parking spaces while the demolition of the portal. The portal is also part of the ADA project aspect, because the front door is the primary ADA accessibility, and it's a protected door, entryway. So, removal of the portal will be fall underneath the ADA. Eventually, it'll all be new concrete also, on the sidewalk. We're not gonna do that concrete work till springtime. We're gonna try and keep disturbance to the plaza to a minimum, so we wanna take out, do the demolition now of the portal. We'll do some temporary water management issues to keep the water off of the portal. People will be able to walk, because once the portal's gone, we'll move the construction fence right up against the building. So people will still be able to walk along, parking spaces will be usable again. Talked to the, had conversations with the town of Taos, the manager and the deputy manager, and we have permission, and we're just kinda working out the actual logistic details, to put a couple dumpsters in the back parking lot while the demolition's going on, so that it can be, the refuse can be removed quickly. We're also, they're also gonna allow us to use part of the parking lot that they leased from, from the church, the unpaved part, so we can have a material yard back there. Franken construction, like I said, we have a schedule of values for what we have under contract already, so that we can start getting billed for mobilization on the ADA, the fencing, and like I said, demolition will likely start late next week. What they're now working with, and our architect is, well, like I said, call it Phase 1A, because we have that additional $2.126 million from the legislature to continue the work, and incorporate it, so that we can complete the elevators, and actually start on some of the interior stuff for the public restrooms, continue with the life safety, the fire alarm systems, and that kind of thing, and the upgrades for the electrical. Schedule, like I said, right now, is spread out across 365 days. That will be updated as things move forward. The elevator cart, which is one of the big lead times, the research is already going on to see what's gonna work the best. For us, we're gonna use T-Sonk elevators like we have here, so that we can bring it into our maintenance contract, not have a different vendor out there, different vendor here, another different vendor there. So, it will be a T-Sonk elevator, we've been pretty happy with our service, and we haven't, well, we had the sheriff get locked in one day, but that was a power issue.
That was probably intentional, right?
But, it's moving forward. Like I said, we still don't have our permit from CID, it's been paid for. They're doing their best, the architect's working on it, contractor's working on it, everybody's calling CID, so hopefully we'll have it. But, we don't need it for the demolition, we do have to do a notice of intent to the air quality bureau, because we are gonna create dust. One of the big concerns was about jackhammering and whatnot, part of the specifications for the project. The biggest issue is the jail that was constructed either in the late 50s, early 60s, the masonry jail on the west, northwest corner of the project. All the demolition there will have to be saw cut, it will not be a jackhammer going in, and on a, we don't wanna disturb the neighbor's building, we don't wanna do damage to the actual courthouse. So, that'll be a lot of cutting, and breaking up pieces, and small jackhammers, but...
So, Richard, I think we're due for another public meeting, right? That's what we said, we were gonna have two public meetings.
Yeah, I would like to do one, maybe early next week. I've talked to Brent, and we're gonna see about getting an add in the paper. I'd like to do it before the demolition starts. If not, definitely the following week. But, we are, I am hoping we can squeeze one in Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
That would be great, yes.
And Madam Chair, thank you, thank you, Richard, great updates this morning, appreciate them. Along the lines of, like, you know, the public meeting, have, I know you did a lot in the last couple of months to go around the plaza and talk to folks. Have we let, like, the immediate neighbors, and, I mean, honestly, the public in general? Because, you know, if they don't know what's going on, they'll make up something to fill that gap. Like, what have we done? And this might not even be for you, this might be for other staff folks. Like, have we given an update to the community, especially the immediate neighbors, any, in any time recent? Like, as our timelines get firmed up and get closer? I'm just wondering what we've done to let people know what's going on.
We haven't done actual public, another public announcement, or anything like that. I have been there, like I said, we've had project meetings, and Ms. Malanga attended one of them for part of it. We've also been with some of the merchants that, the Trash Fashion Show that was last week, they had asked if they could use the facility for changing. Talked to the general contractor, because it's in his realm now, and he said yes. So, I made the, made the call, and we opened up for him, and locked up for him. And so, we have had conversations, one-on-one conversations with tenants and the general public, but we haven't done another public meeting. My phone, like I said, is always open, there was the ad, it was a nice story in the paper last week. It's a good project. Mr. Romero, our incoming commissioner, shared a report with me that was done in 2012, I believe. It's very similar in goals, some of the things were some of the issues that we had to tackle during the design process, like the thoughts about putting an elevator inside instead of outside, leaving the structures to the west and east side of the building. All those issues were addressed by State Historic Preservation Office. Yes, we could have put the elevator inside still, people don't realize that when you put an elevator inside a building, how much space you lose. You basically lose a whole space downstairs, a whole space upstairs, because you have to have exits into a hallway, into a separate room, or lobby. Like, we have lobbies at our elevators, so when you add the elevator size of the elevator, and the lobby for the peoples, that you're not blocking walkways, emergency exits and whatnot, you end up losing a lot of space. It does work much better in the west. It does work much better in the west alleyway. It appeases some of the people that are opposed to, to the walkways because they're, it's a secure walkway now. During business hours, people can walk north to south, south to north or into the courthouse. The east walkway will be secured, cameras lit, automatic gates. And we're, we do our doors here. But east walkway is phase seven X, you know? I mean, it's the last piece of the puzzle. The building is, is, is the primary.
Richard, after, I know, I know at the last public meeting, um, you gave your number. You were, uh, you made it very clear that anyone could call you, ask questions. Uh, after the, that meeting and after the um write-up in the newspaper, have you received? I'm just curious, have you received any calls?
The only one that ever calls me is either, and Ruth Ann hasn't called me, but Ms. Malanga has called me, I think, three times. And she did go into our meeting for a little bit and expressed her opinions.
Great, glad she, yeah, was able to.
But yeah, though my, my phone.
Just wondering, like, what, what kind of feedback? Okay, great, thank you. Any other question, Commissioners, in regards to, to that? Okay, well, I look forward to the next public meeting because I think that's definitely what we told uh, the public and, and certainly we, we want to at that time.
This won't be the last one, there'll be continuation, just to keep people to, to update on where we're at and what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so um if there are no other questions, let's move on to Tom Holder, uh, I'm sorry, Tom Holder scoping report. And Jason, Deputy County Manager, good to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for allowing me to present today. This has been an item that's kind of been, uh, probably should have been addressed maybe 10 years ago. But you know, I mean, the understanding that over the last year, the development that has happened off of Cochia Road, uh, I think there's a toll of 17 houses that have been built. And I know there's a couple of permits that are in there that has kind of um increased the volume of, of residents amongst other areas down the road. And so as originally, this was going to be just an overlay project. But then as I started looking at it and identifying a single lane bridge that was there, uh, maybe we need to kind of look into this a little bit more. So I requested, uh, back in March, um, a scoping report with WH Pacific. And part of the scoping report is, uh, we had a topo of the whole site, the roadway. It's, it's, uh, it's only half a mile long, but between that topo, we were able to identify. And there, we're fortunate that part of the easement to the, to the to the, the, huh, trying to remember the, to the west of us, we did purchase. So we have some property there to widen the road. So through that process of it, um, well, I guess it depends on how you're looking at the road, whether it's western. But there's that area, we can widen the road because right now it's a fairly narrow roadway. Um, so through that process, uh, we have also conducted a traffic study, which kind of, I was amazed to see how many vehicles are traveling that. It's actually more than Blueberry Hill right now. Uh, we have 2,300 cars per day that are going through that roadway.
Wow.
And that shows the influx of all the residents that have moved into this area. And it's only half, half a mile at this point. But you know, the, the traffic study, which is alarming to me within this traffic study is, uh, it's a lot of uh tandem axle vehicles. So which means there are a lot of construction vehicles coming through there, where there are mixers, dump trucks. So that was a large peak during the hours of nine through uh three, which means that shows how much more development is going on in this area because there's deliveries going in and out. So, so this is only going to increase by, you know, a factor of 1.5% over the next couple of years. Uh, the identified individual that has constructed those 17 homes has purchased another 40 acres. So we're going to have that much more influx of, of residents moving in this area. So this is a large item of concern as Blueberry Hill is. But um I've asked for, this is kind of becomes a complex situation. As you can see, the, the roadway that's up here, there's two issues that I would like to address. And that's the, the, as both of these meet State Road 240 and then Cochia, uh, the State Road 240, the way the dogleg hits from that singling bridge, the, I have three different options that I gave um to WH Pacific that would be a wish list of mine to get quoted out or at least provide some engineering for. And the one off of 240, I would like to realign this roadway to that intersection of Camino de Medio because we've had a couple accidents around that blind turn. So if we could realign that intersection, uh, that is the, what I would like to see. But the issue that I, that is, has come up is there's going to be a portion of a land acquisition, which is going to be a hefty price tag. So, so through this uh area of aligning this roadway, uh, we're looking somewhere on the realm of a 4.7 million dollars. And that's a rough estimate of the current comps that are coming in, uh, purchasing this right away uh, to realign this roadway. And uh, so, so, so that would be some of the issues that we're kind of dealing with. So we have three different versions. It would be that one. Uh, the next version, we would keep the road as is uh and have a double lane bridge that we would have there. We still have a land acquisition because we don't own the property um uh to the east of us there. And that would be about 3.5 million. And then there'd be the other, the stripped-down model would be keeping a new modified bridge in there to support the weight that is coming through to, for commercial traffic would be the mixers and dump trucks and so forth or the, that's coming down there. And then just widening the road to two 11-foot roadway, uh, road pass uh, with a, a two-foot shoulder on each side for walking trails. So through this area, that would be uh one of the options that we would go down as, as well.
That's a double lane bridge still? We're still talking about a double lane?
Yes, so that would be a double lane bridge as well. So we, we would upgrade that bridge uh through all of this. And I think that's probably the safest. But as, as mentioned, there's, there's a lot that is kind of going into here. You know, we, we have another version and the Cochia side of, of that influx, that's another direction of how this road was built, where we have these kind of acute angles that are retiring and transitioning back into another roadway. This would be optimum to have a roundabout or another option to allow people to work through there. But that goes to another land acquisition. You know, these are all large proxies, projects, but for us to really support this, uh, I think this is the manner that we probably need to start going down. And knowing that this development is going to continue the growth in this area. But this is a school bus route and this is an arduous route that sees a lot of, of um, that is a primary um issue within our community. So, so right now, I just wanted to bring everybody up to, the scoping report is not completed. These are just preliminary numbers, but the traffic numbers, I can email you all of these counts so you could see what these counts are coming in as. Uh, but that's kind of um the concept, or at least the, the concepts I had and how I relayed that back to WH Pacific of what I would like to see out of this project. At this time, I stand for any questions.
Four years ago, they told us it would be close to 10 million, so I'm actually pleased.
Nice, okay, that's good.
So, Madam Chair. The 10 residents that are on Tom Holder Road, are they understanding with that extension beefing up the, the bridge, the amount of additional traffic that's going to be going through? And I, and I guess my whole thing is that I, going up that road, you and I both having the ability of using some heavy equipment, it's not very safe to be going up on ten, hauling dirt or any kind of crew. But is it, is it something that this future commission would consider? Is looking at making sure that it's less throttlely, maybe one-way? Um, and/or uh not beefing up the bridge so that these trucks know that they can take that shortcut to get to Cochia? That's, that's what they're using that road for. I just, I just think that any resident that's on that Tom Holder Road is going to be very upset if they got, we just beef up the road and we take. You know, I've driven a bunch of them, there's a couple of speed humps and uh, are they going to stay? Are they not staying on speed humps? I, I really appreciate the chair taking a 10,000-foot view of it all. But I, I do think that, you know, as we talked about uh the future development, these property owners or developers got to consider how the traffic is going to affect everybody because they're putting these properties up on top, getting sold, adding more room. Cochia has its problems already in that little S-turn on the top with little, no barbed rail. I mean, I, I'm just, you're going to look at the road, how do we do that? So um, I just, I'm glad you're looking at, looking at it, taking it slower steps. I know that as a commission, kind of, there was an idea just cutting the road, trying to make it square, taking on somebody's property on that side where Mr. Romero was there, trying to make it more like a T. Uh, but in the day, you know, where, who, who, who's benefiting from it? Is it the people on top of Cochia that still have access to state highway? So I also use the potholes as a speed control device.
I, I hear you, Commissioner Gago. To at least eliminate some of the construction and traffic that would come through here would probably be, maybe um, we have weight restrictions on that road, but then we would need law enforcement to cite. So you know, it is an option. And uh, the main thing right now, that what I see is, is an issue when part of this traffic study is, I think the locals that have lived here for years, it's common courtesy, you stop at the road, you let somebody go. Right now with the new influx, people are just going through, there's people that can hit on because it's a single lane bridge. And uh, what I see more often than not, other than the school buses, are just um low trucks, individuals that identified this road as just, this is how you get to point A to point B and not knowing that there's other options in there. So trying to maybe just, uh, to answer your question, put weight restrictions on the road that would eliminate some of that construction traffic or at least uh six axle tandem trucks that are, that are, are, could hamper the residents in this area. But I think it goes back to that same thing that I kept to say. I know that the residents that live on this roadway, as they adopt this roadway, they understand it becomes public domain that we can't restrict anybody to go on that road as long as public funds are coming through here. But I know that at one point, it would be District One would probably hear the community members within that roadway. Their concerns of not wanting to restrict that. But then there's a point that they really don't have, it's an arduous route and a school bus route. So it kind of is null at that point. But I hear you though.
Yeah, no, and I get it, I just, like I said, I appreciate you at least, uh, you're taking that 10,000-foot view and looking at it for different options as opposed to just in the past, hammer through and then deal with consequences later. So you're definitely seeing the difference.
And part of this, as you can see and everybody knows, this is a green belt of our community. So this is an issue that has never really taken, nobody's taken into account for a lot of these roadways. Conejo Road as, as identified factor, that was paved uh maybe back in 2012? It's a fail, it's, what time? Caio. Uh, and it's somewhat of a failing roadway because it might have been pushed just to pave it for, for that reason, probably because the community wanted it, which I understand. But there are steps in here in green belt areas where it's marshlands and there's high water table. The ge- ge- geotechnical aspect of engineering wasn't taken into account to allow a geo grid and create some suspension to, to create stability in this marshland. This one, the reason why this comes up to the quote that it is as well, and I'm surprised it was a $10,000 at one point, which is great.
10 million.
10 million. Uh, this will have that geo grid through everything. So you're going to be able to, to overexulate the road, have a geo grid with cobble to allow water to still flow underneath these, these agricultural lands and create a road that we can maintain for at least 20 years. Because we have one, like, like I mentioned, Caio, uh, that is already failing and it's only about eight years old though. But it, the engineering wasn't properly uh put in place, so it was kind of like rushed.
Shut the traffic on it.
It's crazy.
Yes. And you know, that's the hardest part was, is, is utilizing all these roads and either coming up to where it has a five-inch mat on there, or you know, two, three-inch mats, kind of like what we happen to see when 10, where it can hold that commercial traffic. Because you know, that's how individuals are just coming off, they're just, our town's growing.
Right.
Quicker than we can see.
What's really interesting is um, because I think there's some confusion as to whether that's District One or Three. Uh, I, it is one, but I was going to say for the community. I've received phone calls from people that actually live on that road that want us to fix it and make it a double lane bridge. So I, I just want to point that out, interestingly enough. But I, I do know and recognize it is District One.
Yeah, that fence line you see just below the road is our boundary.
Yes.
So you know, as mentioned, uh, the land acquisitions were blossomed just to be. That's where the realignment of the road would tie into that.
I haven't met with them in there.
Yes.
Good with them.
Yes, so you know, we'll, we'll identify that. I just wanted to share everybody that there is progress. I've, I've got a couple of emails sent, you know, from constituents that are requesting. And in the meantime, what we're, we're going to do on this road is do a Band-Aid, which is going to just fan blade some asphalt on a couple of these areas that are rough and just roll it in, just to buy us some time. Because as mentioned, this is just a scoping report. I wanted to receive this data of, of all the, the traffic data so we can support and see how we want to pursue this. Uh, at the same time, this would be going back into New Mexico DOT, a traffic study that I would like to see. Because as we're embarking on a state road, this transition from two of our county roads, Camino de Medio and Tom Holder, uh, either, you know, I don't know how that would work, either we create another, there's no way for a roundabout, but the road may be a traffic light because the influx of, of how many people are flowing through there on a daily basis. So 2,300 cars was somewhat alarming to see this come up. I didn't expect that. You know, that's actually more than Blueberry Hill right now. Well, actually not right now. When the scoping report was done in 2020 at Blueberry Hill, that was 2,100 cars. Understanding what we're dealing with here, the freight traffic moved to that one. So, and that has crippled that road in so many ways from an already, already tough road. But that goes back to the level of funding, you know? I mean, this is going to be, the reason I wanted to put this here is because this is going to go after some bill, the bipartisan infrastructure law. So we can get this funding and this could be this. Uh, for, we can fulfill this as one of those elements. Uh, I'm just trying to find the perfect grant because there's multiples out there of either it's 100% match or 50% match. That will, we'll have to shore up on our site.
Thank you.
Stand for any questions?
Yes. Madam Chair, a couple of comments just for your edification. The strip of Agland that we own was bought from Ernestine Sanesteban for about, what's your name?
Correlia.
Correlia. Correlia Sanesteban?
Yes.
I think at that point for 130,000. And there are two irrigation ditches. We need to make sure we're up to payment in our dues on those. And it's that use it or lose it. We have water rights. And I, I'd like to see this uh section farmed out to someone who wants to farm it, put their cows on, uh, reishi, goats for weeds because it, time has passed here and we, we have rights to the water for two of the Aseca ditches that run through it. So I, I just want to make sure those water rights, that the dues have been paid and that somehow we either farm it, uh, put it out for someone to farm, so we don't lose our water rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Great idea.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is structure evaluation report from Amalia's and Senior Center. Discussion, consideration and decision regarding the demolition of the building. And Gilberto, projects.
I want to comment on Tom Holder real quick. So just remember October 4th, 2022 is, is when we start this process. Jason's already been walking up for a couple of months. The point being is it takes a while to even get it to shovel ready. So we're starting that process to get it to shovel ready. Go for it, Gilberto.
Thank you for, for that.
Good afternoon.
Good reminder. Good afternoon.
Hi. So um, no, actually it says consideration of demolition. One thing we learned yesterday, actually, is that there is currently a go bond for the November ballot for 1.4 million for the Amalia Communities, our senior center, sorry. So that kind of changed a little bit after we learned that yesterday. If we get that money, we'll have money to do something with it. Um, but as of right now, um, WH Pacific did the structural evaluation then with Travis Greaves. And we are at 9.8, or sorry, 980,000 in stuff in repairs to fix the senior center. Um, we also would be looking at about another 10% for design. So we're at like 1.1 million right now to fix it. Um, sure, some of you guys know it's been an issue for a little bit. On the north corner of the building, right now, we have almost seven inches of settlement. We did some additional work over the last few months. We um excavated along the footing on the outside of the building. We found a bunch of trash, glass, metal posts um that transferred into the inside. We did some boreholes on the inside that. We did some bore holes on the inside, that north corner as well. We pulled out pieces of barbed wire two feet under the slab. So the big issue, the main issue for the settlement there is bad soil and then some drainage from stormwater, snow melt and all that on the north side of the building. So like I said, right now, that is our construction estimate from WH Pacific is about 1.1 million.
Wow. I'm envisioning what that looks like and what you're finding. How did that even happen? I mean, do they, was it missed during the construction?
So pretty much, I mean, in the construction design in, from everything that we have, they didn't call it out for over excavation, which is what normally happens in issues like that. Another interesting thing about it is we did do a community meeting a couple, about two months back. And a lot of the older community there, like, yeah, it was a dump at one point. So they knew about it. But yeah, on the initial design, like I said, we do have plans, the original plans. There was no over excavation or anything called out for it. It was just build on what's there. Yeah.
Probably, probably to save themselves money to put the building up. And that's why they didn't do the due diligence, right? And I think that, you know, is the conversation going to be if awarded 1.4 to relocate it a little lower from the community center alongside the community center? I mean, there's no reason to go there and knock it down and then have to over excavate. You're going to put more money into digging a deeper hole in that dump.
Yeah.
Right? I think so. As, as much as I respect the citizens of Amalia and their wants and potential needs for that community center, I think that this is, this may be another opportunity for us to look at these two small communities consolidated into one community center. That makes sense for, for the county as one and, and overall the whole community. I mean, I don't see the community actually growing, but I'm not going to be one to put my foot in my mouth. It might grow in the next five years if, if somebody comes in and puts a big investment or a developer come in. But, you know, it's a lot of money to put in again. You know, we've, we got things in, primarily in some of my, my district or in any district that we still see things laying on the ground and we're not getting anything done with them. So it's not fault to, to you guys that are working. But I think that in the past, you know, we find what's hot, just go jump on it and then we forget what we were just building a week ago. And then we jump on something else that's hot again. And I think this is kind of where we hopefully can kind of come to some resolution that sitting with both communities, maybe sitting and finding if there's a happy medium based on, on, I mean, because 1.4 million dollars is a lot of money to put in another community center. I'm not, you know, there's a value to the communities that exist there. They've been there for a long time and I don't want to see or say that, that, that community center, or the senior center doesn't deserve some, some value. But I think it's important to really consider this because it's, it's a, it's a big investment again to put in there. Especially when we have buildings that are potentially, can be more, more versatile and universal use. I think that's kind of what learned over the years is what we have is almost better to go ahead and put and repurpose it than it is to build new. Because building new nowadays is going to be five times more than what it would cost last seven years ago, you know?
And, and on that too, meeting with the community a couple of months ago, and they kind of reflect the same thoughts and, and everything, is they understand what's going on. And really, I mean, they're fine a little more on the short term, kind of sharing the space with Costaia. They all said they would like their own place again eventually. I mean, they do realize short term that just to get something would probably be sharing some space with like Costaia or something. But I mean, they, they understand it. And like I said, they all knew that it was a dump at one point. One of the guys even said that the Arroyo went pretty much underneath the building and they redirected the Arroyo too. So it's, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they understand it.
And, and you know, I mean, their willingness to probably at that time, somebody turned a blind eye to make sure they just.
And that's part of the.
It might have been pushed by political presences at that time to get this thing done. As, as Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned, a lot of these smaller communities, they just want, they need a place to gather for those funerals, those receptions, anything that comes up. And I think that if the short term is to find a common use area for both of them and if we can eventually, which I would hope the future commission would consider, potentially taking on this endeavor down the road with a little bit more room. But yeah, I, I, it's, it's tough. And I really hope that if, you know, 1.4 million is a lot of money to go chase down a bond and have that tied up into the community as a whole, you know what I mean? Those bonds are, those general bonds, you know, take out of us at some point.
And, I mean, like I said, it's a combination of everything, I think, too. Because if you look at the notes on the plans that we have, they were pouring cement in November, December. So I mean, that also doesn't help if you dig and you find trash and you're already fighting weather and stuff. It just adds to get it done type kind of thing and stuff. So like I said, it's a combination of a bunch of.
Was there, I'm sorry commissioners, was there a, I know that we talked about this, if the whole foundation isn't bad and just that corner is bad, is there a possibility of cutting that piece out, securing what is existing, even if they have no dry storage?
Yeah.
You could put a conics unit or something that could do the dry goods. I mean, if that's, if the urgency of having something like that is, is what is needed, then I think we could.
And that's the plan. The construction estimate is to not necessarily cut out that corner, but it's to do some helical piers like we did in the stairwell here at the courthouse and support the foundation. Once that's supported, pretty much like what happened at the assessor's office, would be to cut out the slab, take out about two feet of fill, re-put in new fill, engineered fill, compact, pour a new slab, redo the walls. That's what the construction estimate is for. So it's not really like a cutout teardown, it's a support and fix. And same thing with that too. I mean, at the, the construction estimate, they have replacing like four windows. If we lift the building and we break more windows, because it's going to move again, we'll have to replace more windows. So it's.
The building can break more windows as well. And damage.
Thanks to you guys for going up and having those community meetings with them. And explaining to them a little bit about what the longer process is. Because, you know, a lot of times we don't get that, that second conversation with people that are actually doing the work. Myself as elected is we're, we, well, this is what they say. Well, Commissioner Gago, you're just, you're just kicking that can down the road. But when you're actually sitting there and having that conversation and they understand what the problems are, then it helps a lot. So thank you.
Thank you.
Want to surprise them?
You know, well, what I've seen, soils testing. If you don't test the soils properly and make sure the compaction rate is correct, this is what's causing problems. It happened here. You know, whoever was testing, whatever company tested the soils, whatever company, if they even tested the soils back in the day. And I don't know how much we have to stress the importance of soil testing and right compaction. Because this has caused millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars because of lack of soil compaction testing.
Commissioner, to that point, a lot of, a lot of times, it's, it's not only just the testing and because of where we live, we have a lot of plastic, a lot of clay. And we have a lot of sandy areas. So over there, part of the issue, it's not, it's not the quality of the foundation. The foundation actually for 40 feet has no cracks in, absolutely none. The problem is that the soil, the native soils, as deep as they are, are settling on their own because they're sandy. And if there's water that's flowing through, it moves the soil. To give you an example, especially in Amalia, for 10 years, I've been watching the electrical and Gilberto and I have been watching the electrical. We removed the sidewalks almost two years ago. We've repaired the control conduit that goes out to the alarms on the septic systems twice, the Sony's house. The pipe and the soil that's going out has settled over four inches on its own. It's not even under the building. It's pulled the electrical conduits out of the electrical boxes that are mounted on the building. So the natural soil is moving faster than the building's even settling. And so, and, and it's not just here. I mean, we had the same issue with the hospital, Bradbury Stamm and Associates. They were the engineering and everything. They reused some of the soil, but it was a very plastic soil up there. And there was settling, septic lines broke, all the frost-free sidewalks broke, hydronic heating in the sidewalks. So there was a big issue with the Holy Cross also. San Francisco, there's a $14 billion condo tower that has settled 14 inches. And they're had, trying to remediate that and they had to stop because the remediation started causing more settling. And so it's something that sometimes it's unavoidable, even with good testing and engineering.
Okay. Thank you. I believe there's a 1 o'clock meeting in here, so I'm going to go ahead and push it along.
Pushed it back to 1:30.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So based on the information that we received yesterday, we have some decisions that we need to consider. That money's for a new building or we can use it for repair. The other conversation that we've been in is with West End Municipal School District about them giving us the Costaia School. There's a newer portion. We don't want the old portion. And these, Richard and Gilberto do like the new portion, which would serve well as the community center. There's some things we'd have to do in the kitchen. So prior to yesterday, that's our recommendation. There's going to be, there's some other issues that we need to look into regarding that property. It also goes back, we mentioned it with these guys, that to Commissioners, Gago's point about a few years ago, about it being a detox treatment center facility that would also lend itself well to that. These guys agreed with that as well when we talked yesterday. But we were trying to find alternatives. So we're, because we, our recommendation wasn't to put in the $1 million to repair the building, it was to tear it down. And, and so we needed to evaluate this new 1.4, if we could even do anything with it for this building.
Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. So let's move on. Is there any other questions before we move on? Ben? Okay. Thank you, Gilberto. Appreciate it. So next we have Commissioners Reports and Report and Matters and Commissioners Announcement. Any announcements, Commissioners?
I think it would be the 18th, 19th, 20th and 21st Cloud Cross, New Mexico County Insurance Authority, Food Chain.
Okay. Thank you.
I will be at the County Commissioners Going Away Party, 18th, 19th and 20th in Las Cruces. Any former county commissioner going to join?
And I will be at the Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area. The, actually, I think it's named something different, but in regards to that in Alamosa, believe it or not, big, I'm going really far, next week. And so that I will be leaving on the 10th and back on the 13th. That is a conference. Thank you. Okay. Any other announcements? No? Okay. Okay. Let's go on to new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. I, for one, don't have anything else to add. I think there's already a lot on the table.
I agree, Madam Chair. Dead horse is just the.
Okay. Okay. Then I see no, nothing new here that we want to add on adjournments. Any, is there a motion?
Motion.
Good. We're all in agreement? Thank you. Belle?
Same for next time.
Bring more.
I'll bring more. Do you have any?